Good afternoon and welcome to the February 11th, 2020 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right. So first on the agenda, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Mr. Hurdman.
I know you're wait. It's okay, I'll come back. Okay, please. Ms. Dixon.
I guess this is as good a time as any, just to clarify. Item number seven on the harbor code, as we discussed at the last meeting when we moved this forward, we do, as moving it as a new ordinance, and this is the second reading, we did say, two weeks ago, agree that matters relating to live aboard occupancy in commercial marinas would be, we recommended to the Harbor Commission that they would take this up. In addition to that, I just would like to make sure that if I understood it two weeks ago, that the Harbor Commission is looking at marine activity permit process, is that correct? And that matters related to commercial uses and use permits and harbor development permits and commercial uses will be taken up in that, under that scope of marine activity permits, is that correct?
Yes, they took out the marine activities permit chapter, so they'll be looking at all the commercial uses as part of that.
Okay.
That will come back to the city council.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So I have no other items, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Yeah, this is, I guess, a joint A1 request, but also really a clarification on item number seven, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps Mr. Harp can help me with this. Hoping that Title 17 can either be looked at by the Harbor Commission or brought back to us to put a little bit of purview on piers, the power of the city manager to allow piers and encroaching piers to exist, the notice that must be given, and also a couple things, including relation to setbacks, and like I said, encroaching piers and floats and damaged piers. I have to talk about offline, but some residents have concerns about these issues, and I just hope that it comes back for clarification as a separate item, and I'll talk to you in person more about it. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
I'm just going to be pulling item three so that we can talk about it in greater detail.
Okay. Mr. Delfield Nun, Mayor of Port-au-Prince, Avery. Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment about Title 17 and live abords, and my comment is that this process took an entire year, and there was ample opportunity for community input and to receive input this late in the process when we're looking at a second reading before the council almost subverts the whole process, in my opinion. Asking it at this late stage of the game, after what the subcommittee and the Harbor Commission undertook as far as a massive amount of work, especially in the area of mooring permit holding and how long a person who holds a mooring can stay aboard at night. I know the policy is calling for three nights. I'd like to put a reminder out there that if someone wishes to spend more than three nights in their boat on their mooring, there are other options within the harbor to be able to do that. Some are free, some have a fee, but that is doable. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe a quick clarification, Mr. Harp, on procedure. So tonight, if Title 17, which is item number seven, is not pulled, is it possible for a portion of the motion to include a recommendation to the Harbor Commission to take a look at the pier issue that Mr. Muldoon raised rather than removing it off and for that sole purpose?
Yeah, I think that'd be perfectly appropriate.
Okay. All right, we'll figure out how to do that. Okay. With that, we'll go into item number two, recognition of Jim Mosher for hours devoted to city business. As everyone probably knows by this point, we're calling 2020 the year of the volunteer, and so we're having a lot of fun celebrating people who have given quite a bit back to the city. I've asked all my fellow council members to name individuals and groups to do so, and tonight, Councilmember Joy Brenner has asked to recognize Mr. Mosher. So with that, Ms. Brenner.
Okay. This proclamation reads, whereas for more than a decade, Jim Mosher has made his knowledge and expertise available to citizens and city officials in Newport Beach, and whereas Jim attends many, this says many city meetings, but I might say all city meetings, community meetings and California Coastal Committee Commission meetings, and whereas Jim diligently reviews meeting agendas, staff reports and other city documents, and whereas Jim shares his knowledge and input unselfishly and with humility, whereas Jim sets an example by riding his bicycle everywhere he goes except when it's raining and sometimes when it's raining, which helps inspire other citizens to utilize alternative modes of transportation, whereas Jim is greatly admired by many Newport Beach citizens for his contributions to the community. And back to the mayor.
Now therefore, I, Will O'Neil, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, to hereby recognize Jim Mosher for his many years of service to the citizens and community of Newport Beach. Congratulations, Mr. Mosher. Now, as is tradition, Mr. Mosher, you are welcome to speak.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil and members of the council. This was quite unexpected. When I saw this on the agenda last Thursday, it remains deeply embarrassing because I truly have never sought any personal recognition for anything I do. So I would like to think the council in honoring me is trying to recognize the value of public input to your proceedings, even and especially when some of the input, it may not be things you always want to hear, and more generally to recognize the value added by everyone, not just me, but everyone who takes the time to read an agenda item and provide their input to you. If that truly is the larger council's intent, I would suggest an even better way to recognize the value of public participation would be to reverse some of the changes to council policy that were made some years ago by a different council with a different attitude who wanted to limit the participation of some members, including me. There are two very specific things you could do. One would be to restore the time limit for public comments to the five minutes that it always been before I began participating in public meetings. The other would be to restore the ability of citizens who come to your meetings to remove items from the consent calendar for separate discussion and vote. Those who have participated in council meetings longer than me, and there are many, I think can attest that council meetings really worked better under those old rules. Few people abused the five-minute rule. Most comments were under three minutes, but people did not get cut off, and people really felt empowered when they could pull an item of interest to them from the consent calendar for separate discussion and vote. I hope, if this is sincere, you will sincerely consider reverting to what we used to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Hurdman. All right, we'll move on to item number three, consideration of prohibiting motorized uses on the oceanfront boardwalk. We'll go with staff presentation first. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, just one moment. We have recused.
I need to recuse myself due to real property interests.
This afternoon, we wanted to talk a little bit about the oceanfront boardwalk. At council's request to bring this back and have a discussion a little bit about prohibiting motorized vehicles, particularly electronic bikes and other electronic items. So tonight with us is Brad Summers. He's our principal civil engineer, and he'll be giving a presentation on this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'm Brad Summers, the principal civil engineer within the Public Works Department. And yes, this afternoon, we will be talking about the oceanfront boardwalk and specifically discussion of motorized uses on that facility. I like this beginning picture here. We have a nice drone shot of the peninsula itself, and you can see the oceanfront boardwalk or oceanfront walk in that concrete swath there adjacent to the beach and the ocean and the homes, and then of course, parallel by Balboa Boulevard. This really is a scenic jewel that we have in the city, and it is very popular, of course, not just for recreation, and we do know that we have people come down, whether they choose to cycle it, walk it, or even skate it, but also by our residents. It adds mobility to the peninsula, allows for our residents and our community members to travel the peninsula without perhaps getting into their car and, you know, adding to the congestion. We lost the screen. There we go. And we also see it even used by some of our youth, such as the Newport L students traveling to and from school, as well as the junior guard during the summer. Now, over the years, it's been a longstanding concern from the residents that has been addressed in several different ways by staff, but also the conversation continues about poor user behavior, and that's directly tied to speeding and unsafe operation of, I'd say, most users. It's not always cyclists. We hear concerns from, about pedestrians and dog owners and other things as well. But I think recently, the popularity of electric conveyances such as bicycles and other items that we've seen more recently has brought this conversation back up. Now, the oceanfront is primarily regulated by Chapter 1254 of the municipal code, which establishes the oceanfront boardwalk safety program. This defines the users and uses of the oceanfront, as well as the regulations that apply to them. It defines the oceanfront as a walkway. It establishes an eight mile per hour speed limit, prohibits motorized scooters and unsafe operation, establishes the rules of how to use the oceanfront and how to travel on it, provides for authority of enacting regulations, as well as posting signs to the city traffic engineer within the Public Works Department, and establishes penalties for those who choose not to follow these rules. Additionally, there are other sections in the municipal code, such as those that prohibit suricycles and pedicabs, as well as skateboards from the oceanfront, and accompanying items within the California Vehicle Code that help to define some of these new users, and some of which actually add some prohibitions. Another interesting note is these electronic personal assistive mobility devices, or EPAMDs, which are directly tied to the mobility of disabled persons. Another note about this slide, we do have a representation of some of the signs that we actually posted at each of the street ends along the peninsula and some mid-block. I believe there's over 120 signs such as these, as well as other markings and signs along roughly just under a three-mile path, and of course, these are meant to encourage proper operation, as well as provide a friendly reminder of how we'd like them to enjoy the facility. The California Vehicle Code actually does classify and define electric bicycles as bicycles equipped with fully operable pedals, excuse me, and electric motor. There are three classifications. Class one and two are both considered low-speed or pedal, or excuse me, low-speed electric bicycles, and the similarity is that the power assist or the motor shuts off at about 20 miles per hour. And the California Vehicle Code allows both of these devices on, or these classifications on sidewalks, paths and trails, but they may be prohibited by a local agency. Now, the difference is, is a class one is a pedal-assisted, meaning the power assist is while you're pedaling the bicycle, whereas a class two uses a throttle, generally a hand or on the handlebar, similar to a motorcycle or maybe an ATV, that allows you to provide power to the bicycle, again, up to 20 miles per hour without pedaling. The class three is considered, or often referred to, as a higher-speed pedal-assisted electric bicycle. These provide power up to 28 miles per hour, and with that in mind, they're generally, well, they are prohibited by the California Vehicle Code already. I think in the past, I think about every couple months, I see something pass me on the sidewalk or the road or out there, and we really are seeing kind of proliferation of new technologies and new ways to travel. And this, of course, is directly tied to the enhancements in the battery technology. Things are getting smaller and lighter, the motors are getting more powerful, and again, smaller and lighter, and being applied to all sorts of wheel travel devices. We have kind of a cross-section here of things that we generally see out there with scooters, segway, hoverboard, electric-powered skateboard. And again, it seems that these technologies are coming out very quickly now, and we're starting to see them more and more on our streets, as well as the paths. To summarize the uses in relation to our Newport Beach municipal code, as it stands now, pedestrians, human-powered bicycles and roller skates and rollerblades are allowed. Skateboards, motorized scooters, motorcycles and minibikes, suricycles and pedicabs are actually prohibited. And then over in this yellow box, we kind of have the area that isn't exactly addressed by our current municipal code section. And with these, and many of these are talked about or maybe referred to in the California Vehicle Code, and they're allowed, or they're new enough, like, say, hoverboards, which they just have not been addressed yet. And those items which we tend to see out in this area are going to be your electric bicycles, again, hoverboards, your segways, which are considered EPAMDs, again, which are tied to the mobility of disabled persons, and other technologies, like that previous slide, we're seeing new stuff come out quite often. I wanted to provide a quick update before we get into our considerations and open up the discussion. We do, in this current CIP budget, have the Oceanfront Improvement Project. We have solicited proposals from consultants through the RFP process and are reviewing those now. And the scope of this project is to review and consider upgrades to the oceanfront boardwalk, including larger items such as a widening of the path or perhaps a secondary path, such as some of our neighbors in the north have. Look at the oceanfront parking lot, as well as McFadden Square Plaza, which are at the base of Newport Pier, again, for those upgrades or enhancements. Two of the key components of the scope are an extensive public outreach program, as well as in-depth data collection of what's going on or who's using the roadway and how they're using, excuse me, not the roadway, the trail. Again, we have gone through the RFP process. We hope to bring this back for an award of the consultant agreement in the spring of 2020 and get out there in time for the summer to ensure we can have good observations. So to help the discussion along, Public Works has prepared four considerations, the first being to maintain the current restrictions, and again, this is related to that other project I just talked, that's about to get off the ground, because coming this summer, we plan to be out there talking with the community and working with them to better understand their concerns, as well as what they'd like to see from the oceanfront, as well as get that better understanding of who's using it. Second consideration would be to move forward with prohibiting or regulating electric bicycles and/or other motorized conveyances. And with this, we would want to ensure that we understood what devices are actually specifically geared towards the mobility of disabled persons as we moved into that topic, as well as an interesting point, which I've talked to community members who I've, I know have actually turned in, say, their traditional pedal-powered bicycles, say, their beach cruisers, and now only have an electric bicycle, and the desire from them would be to still be able to use the oceanfront, but perhaps under a pedal-powered or human-powered way only, not using a power assist. The third item is an update in the municipal code. I feel that the last code change, I believe, was in the 90s or 1990s, and with that, we probably could update it at this point to better work with the California Vehicle Code and other regulations that have been updated. And of course, we could revise the municipal code should we choose to restrict or regulate other device, excuse me, devices. Then the fourth op, or fourth item here is to update the signs, and this would follow after, if we did choose to prohibit or regulate other devices, we would update the signage out there to better educate the users.
Okay. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Brad. I just want to thank you for, once again, doing a boardwalk safety study. I've been on the council six years, and this is probably the sixth year that we've been having a study session on this topic, and I believe a number of residents from the peninsula are here this evening, this afternoon, and I will look forward to hearing from them. I think what I would really like to hear, not only the identification of issues that I know the residents will be bringing forward, but solutions, because I'm just as frustrated as the residents are. We've been talking about, you identified the current regulations, which are just simply ignored, and I know our police chief is here, and later on, I'll ask him to come forward, not now, chief, just to talk about our enforcement. And short of having a police officer on every corner, street corner that butts the boardwalk, I don't know any, what we can do about enforcement. So I think we've reached, in my opinion, have reached kind of, we're enforcing, enforcing citations to visitors, and it's not really having an impact. And the proliferation of electric bikes, and it's hard to differentiate amongst the three different types of electric bikes, so we're putting that burden on the police. And we have a capacity issue on the boardwalk, and I'm glad you mentioned on your earlier, the first slide, it is, it was originally called the Balboa Promenade. It is not a bike path, it is a walking path. And Google Maps, I know staff has been trying since I first saw this, six years ago, Google Maps identifies this as a Newport Beach Balboa bike path. So it's no wonder that people come down in hordes to enjoy beautiful Newport Beach. So what I'm looking for tonight, you have a list of proposed considerations, I have some in my own head that I've been thinking about, but I really want to hear from residents this afternoon about how, if they were sitting up here, what can we do? We want to be a welcoming community, but we want to be a safe community. We want to have our residents feel that they can walk out of their front yard and not be run over by a bike, a skateboard, et cetera. No one is, no one, that's a general statement, is adhering to our current regulations. We have, we have a problem. How can we solve this? And I look forward to the community's participation in this conundrum that we have been facing. I've had 26 town halls over six years of serving on the city council. I think every single town hall has dealt with residents, and Dave knows, he's been there at every one of them, and Brad too, been dealing with and listening to the resident frustration. So today, I really hope that we come up with something that could work for our visitors, our people who want to enjoy the boardwalk, and our residents to come up with some kind of a solution that works for everybody. So thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other comments up here? No? All right, before we go out to public comment, I'd like to maybe ask, when folks are coming up, here's something I'm struggling with. I'm struggling with if we're, if we're not going to ban bikes entirely, the, what we've tried to do is try to find the medium point past councils have where they've limited speed. And so if part of the issue is, if the primary issue is that people are going too fast and that's causing the safety problem, I'm trying to understand what's unique to electric bikes that's not unique to other bikes, because when I'm going on my bike, it's not that hard to get above eight miles an hour by my own pedaling. So I'm trying to figure out if we're, if we're talking about trying to ban electric bikes, what the difference between, what's unique about an electric bike versus a regular bike in terms of the speed issue, because that's, that's not that hard to figure out from an enforcement standpoint. So I know, I know that's, that's what I'm struggling with, so anyway, I wanted to at least throw that out there before we went out to public comment. That's, that's something I'm trying to understand. So any other comments before we go out? All right, we'll go out to public comment. If you'd like to speak, come on up. You're welcome to speak at either of the, either of the microphones. While someone is speaking at one, you're more than welcome to stand at the other so we can get going, and if you'd like to form a line down the middle, by all means, do. All right, thank you.
I'm Bruce Schweitzer. I live on Balboa Island. I have a class-two e-bike, and I have a pedal bike. I use both on the strand. I think it should be open to e-bikes and the bicycles. I ride to work on the strand. If I got kicked off, I would have to be in the street. There's no bicycle lane on the street. I think it is a speed issue. I don't think it matters if someone steps in front of me when I'm on my e-bike or my normal bike, I don't think it'd make much difference. So I don't think it's an e-bike problem, I think it's a speed problem. Also, I think e-bikes are the future and should be encouraged, and that's why I think the strand should be open to e-bikes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Sean Napton Smith. I'm a longtime Newport Beach resident, besides my accent. I've got three kids at Newport Beach schools, and I actually have an electric bike manufacturing business in Newport Beach, employing 24 local bike builders and support staff. Obviously, it's, this issue is dear, close and dear to my heart and significantly affects our business, and we've got some competitors here, of course, we've got hotels and resorts and rental bike businesses. Anyway, if I could also make one point, and it's funny, you went first, and that's exactly, and Mayor, you also mentioned that, it should be a speed thing. It must be regulated and strictly enforced on the boardwalk, but not in particular, any particular class of bicycle. Speed regulations instead must be imposed on everyone in any vehicle utilizing the boardwalk, whether it's a mountain bike, a racing bike, an e-bike, a typical cruiser bike, a scooter, or even the person on rollerblades. We would like to encourage visitors from neighboring cities to visit our beaches, bring their kids, their beach gear, eat at our restaurants and our local shops, and visit our local shops. E-bikes are ideal for this venture, and they enable people from neighboring communities to carry their beach gear from their home without getting into their vehicles. Banning e-bikes from the boardwalk will discourage many segments of our population from coming and using e-bikes in the area, and it's unnecessary. So long as we, as long as the speed regulations on the boardwalks are posted and enforced, electric bikes are a positive improvement for Newport Beach. They alleviate traffic, parking concerns, and they are far better for the environment than motor vehicles. There are already way too many cars on the peninsula and far too many, and far too much traffic, especially in the summertime. E-bikes are the future, and in the future, with technological advancements, nobody's really going to know the difference between a regular bike and an e-bike, as the motors are getting smaller and hidden, and the batteries are now built inside the bicycle frame. It'll be virtually impossible to enforce, you know, enforce which one's a bicycle and which one's not a bicycle. So we'd have to then subsequently ban all bicycles from the boardwalk. But like our Newport Beach harbor, we allow crafts on all, on the water, all types of crafts, sailboats, racing boats, electric boats, but speed is strictly enforced, and it works very well. In conclusion, I'd like to share one thing I actually received today at 3:28 PM. I received a review on my website from Gussie Harris, which said, "I love my bike. It was worth the wait. I have two new knees and can finally ride and keep up again. It is built so well." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Richard Pyles, and I'm the general manager of Corner of Paradise, and I run a bike shop and ice cream shop at the corner of Palm, just by the Balboa Pier, and it's unanimous, starting with the mayor. It really is, with eight mile per hour speed limit, that's the real problem, because, you know, it's not being adhered to by regular bikes. So I don't think the genuine concern will be addressed by, you know, banning e-bikes, because most of them, the ones that are being used are power-assisted, so they are being used as a hybrid, you know, where people are both pedaling and using, you know, some throttle. It's helpful if you have, you know, when the wind picks up and things like that. But you know, what it also does, it's a little bit of an equalizer, and for older folks, for people that just maybe not in the best of shape, it does give them that ability to go a little further. And what it does for our economy, for your economy, is incredible, because, you know, it attracts a lot of people from Costa Mesa, from Huntington, as far away as Seal Beach. People are coming into the area, spending lots of money, because now Newport Beach is accessible. And as an employer, again, it helps me recruit. Unfortunately, the dilemma I have is parking's very expensive, and to survive in a seasonal business, most of my employees are at or near minimum wage. So for them to own an automobile is not always the easiest. For them to pay for parking at summer rates and whatnot is darn near impossible. So with that in mind, it helps being able to recruit really high-quality employees and whatnot much better. So it's really a very functional thing. So it's really a very functional thing. I suggest we ban cars and bring in more e-bikes. I mean, I mean, it's really the wave of the future. That's a little bit disingenuous, but, you know, it really is something I think we should try to find ways to embrace. I think, you know, you know, Diane, whatnot, has really, you know, recognized that, you know, it is part of, of what's going to be happening and to really try to work with it, I think will help business, will allow, alleviate some of the parking issues, which are horrendous. If you're not in that lot by Balboa by 10:00 AM on Saturday in the summer, you're not going to park. So, you know, these, it's really providing, if managed well, it's providing a lot of solutions and bringing in a ton of business of new customers. So I really encourage everybody, I think we're on the right track from the comments earlier, you know, of people's, you know, recognizing, the speed problem exists already. Again, I, I see a lot of accidents, because I'm right there on the boardwalk, and, whoop, and most of them involve regular bicycles, honestly, much more so than e-bikes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Martin Derrick from Seaside Bikes. We're located at the Balboa Inn Hotel. We've had the, I'm sorry, Martin Derrick from Seaside Bikes. We're located at the Balboa Inn Hotel. We've been there since 1929. We're probably the oldest bike shop in the city and in Orange County, since we had shops there for probably 70 years. I brought some information that I cut out of the Los Angeles Times this past weekend, which President Trump has put into law for the Secretary of Interior to classify electric bikes as non-motorized vehicles. And here I brought for the members, it states that electric bikes are to be considered bicycles and they can go anywhere that a bicycle goes. They're also a non-motorized vehicles. The second one they just signed into law last month, the Secretary of Interior says that the bikes are, can go on any federal lands, any federal parks, anywhere that bicycle and mountain bikes can go, electric bikes are allowed by law. So I brought several of these over. And basically, when I rent my electric bikes, I actually police them for them. I tell people when they go out, "You're only allowed to go out eight miles an hour on the bike path." I also tell my people, "Stop at all stop signs." I actually ride my bike around a lot. If I see people, I explain to them, "If I catch you going over eight miles an hour, your ride's over. If I see you running stop signs, your ride's over." Last Sunday, I caught some people running stop signs right by my shop. I chased after them, pulled them back, the ride was over. And one thing that I feel with the electric bikes, that if they're enforced as speed laws, I was riding my bike the other day, a guy went by me going 25 miles an hour on a mountain bike, and I'm going eight miles an hour on my electric bike. So by only condemning electric bikes, which are legal by law, anywhere a bicycle can go now, by federal law, they're considered bicycles, a non-motorized vehicle. And that was just cut out of the Los Angeles Times this past weekend. So basically, I try and keep these people down, and there is a problem with them speeding, but if we can get some more people out there trying to maintain and keep the speeds down, then we won't have a problem with the residents and we won't have a problem anywhere. The electric bikes bring too many people into this business, spend a lot, lot, a lot of money in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. You can pull the mic down. Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, or, I mean, sorry. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and Newport Beach City Council. My name is Ruthie Mattson and I am 10 years old and live on East Balboa Boulevard. I'm in fourth grade at Newport Elementary and I ride my bike on the boardwalk to school every day and also ride a lot on the weekends. There has not been a day that I haven't seen an electric bike going way too fast on the boardwalk. I've almost been hit several times, which makes me really nervous when I ride my bike, because I don't want to get hurt. I also worry about little kids crossing the boardwalk and getting run over by an electric bike. On my way home from school, there was an electric biker come, coming towards me way too fast. I asked him nicely to please slow down and he told me to shut up. I think electric bikes are too fast and too dangerous for a boardwalk. I ask that the city council help ban electric bikes so our boardwalk is safe like it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, normally, normally, we don't allow clapping, but that deserved it. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and Newport Beach City Council. My name is Nathan Mattson. I too live on East Balboa Boulevard. Been a resident in Newport Beach for 44 years, use the boardwalk. I went to Newport L., on it every day still. The one thing we talk about here is not speed, it's not money, it's safety. Safety for our kids, safety for us. And I know everybody can focus on, you know, keeping the speeds to date, but it's clear that nobody does. It's, if there's power there, people are going to use it. It's, and the people using that power are not the ones we really want on our boardwalk anyways. We know it's a, it's a trend. We know battery powered is really picking up in all kinds of areas, but the real problem is safety here that we need to address. It's not about what class the bikes are, what's going on, it's about safety and how fast they're going. And every single day, bikes are going 20, near 20, or above 20 on the boardwalk. And I haven't had a day in the last two years where I haven't seen it happen. Summertime, it's terrible. The bikes are getting heavier, they're getting faster. And we come here and I know that the people talking on behalf of the bikes, I do give them credit. People say that there's one bad apple that spoils the whole bunch. The problem here is we have a bunch of bad apples with maybe one good apple. And the majority of people that are on these electric bikes are going much too fast. I witness it every single day. And it's hard to, for the folks that own shops, they're inside the shops most of the time, they're not seeing what's really happening out there with our kids going whizzing by the schools, the schools get out. So you ask for solutions. One solution, ban electric bikes. That's super hard to do, right? It's, I mean, it would take years to get that done. Their pedal assist, how do you prove it? It's a hard thing to do. The second thing is, is let's get, you know, Chief Lewis and his crew to up the enforcement. Again, do we, do we really want our police officers spending that kind of time? We kind of do, and we want large tickets and large fines going towards people that are speeding on the boardwalk, because it is a safety issue. And third, and I think the most important thing that we can do to eliminate this problem, or at least take a big dent out of it, is remove, remove the ability for these rental companies to rent these electric bikes. The problem is, the people renting these bikes are people coming to our city to enjoy the city, to rent a bike. They walk in the store, they want to rent a bike. They have no idea there's electric bikes there. They don't come to Newport Beach to rent an electric bike, very few will. They want to ride our boardwalk. If it was me, I would pick the electric bike. It's power, you want to whiz down the block, it's probably not much more money, but that is the main issue right there. If we can remove the people to the tourism that don't understand the rules, the safety, the speed limit on our boardwalk, if we can remove that element, the residents, there are always going to be people riding too fast, but we're going to remove about 90% of that if we disallow the bike rental companies in Newport Beach to rent motorized bicycles that are going way too fast every day on our boardwalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, this is so trippy, huh? This is my first city council meeting and I'm a manager over at Pedago Newport Beach. And I just want to say that I do agree with our last speaker that there does need to be a safety concern here about our residents and our tourism. As far as what I see on a day-to-day basis, I, we only rent to people that are 18 and over. It's in our contract that says they need to adhere to the laws and it explains it on the contract that our laws are, eight miles per hour, you know, stop at stop signs, adhere to normal, you know, common sense rules. And what I see is, a lot of people, usually adhere to these rules, but I also see that there's a lot of problems that are, sorry, this is kind of nerve-wracking. But, but it does, it does make business a lot better, especially when people will come down from Huntington Beach and they use the electric bikes from Huntington, then come down here. And it, I mean, whether we like it or not, I mean, this is really a bike path, it's a walking path, it's a lot of things for a lot of people, not just tourists, but, I mean, a lot of my clients are Newport Beach residents who own these electric bikes and use them every day. And, yeah, I mean, I, I think they're a good step forward and I think that's a good way to, it's like the horse to the car. So I think that it should be something that we should be able to use. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Pam Bassett. I live on East Balboa Boulevard. I have to agree that I believe it's a speed problem. The, our electric bikes have been a godsend for me. I would not qualify as a handicap person, but I could no longer ride my bike if I did not have an e-bike. We ride our bikes almost every day for at least an hour. We go to restaurants, we go up and down the peninsula, we watch the sun set. We are passed by far more regular bikes than electric bikes. Our bike is a battery assist with a throttle. I can give it just a little bit of power, which takes all the pressure off of my knees and allows me to ride my bike. As far as solutions, I would suggest that the rental companies possibly have to put a monitor on the bikes, just like on the Duffy boats in the bay, that limit the speed that they can go. I would also suggest that if we put some sort of limitations that for residents or people like me, that there's some sort of a sticker or something that can be applied for and put on, put on the bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Denise Oberman. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Who are we kidding? There are, at my latest count, 12 different varietals of motorized vehicles. You saw them, Mr. Summers did a good job of listing many of them, but that's not all of them. Most of those, by both their design and their operation, are inherently unsafe. Those little things that are motorized, they've got several different kinds, I don't know what to call them, where people are riding along and they're trying to pretend they're boarding and they can go well over eight miles an hour, they can't steer those things, they can't stop those things. So by, by allowing the continued proliferation of motorized vehicles, we have created a situation that is inherently increasingly unsafe. And I think we kid ourselves if there is, if we think that it's going to hurt the city's revenues or be a deterrent to residents if people have to have a motorized bicycle. I'll just cite a few cities. There are cities that are doing very well economically, that could rival even Newport Beach, like Manhattan Beach. No motorized vehicles on their boardwalk. Laguna, no motorized vehicles on the sidewalk. I can go on and on and I'm confident that staff could figure them out as well. So it's going to be tough to say, "Well, we're going to allow this type of motorized vehicle and we're not going to allow this." As to the issue of physically handicapped, I do agree with Pam Bassett, who just spoke, that there is a way to monitor the same way that people could get handicapped stickers for people that legitimately need to use a motorized bike and are willing to be responsible, there is a way to do that. But we have to stop this notion that every, that the only thing that people can do on this flat boardwalk is to get motorized vehicles and go faster and faster. We've got more and more people, we've got more density with residents, we've got a lot more intensity with visitors. One last thing as to penalties. What penalties? I saw that there's a provision in the Newport Beach Municipal Code for penalties. Take a look at that sign, the signage that's out there? There aren't any penalties and as many residents have pointed out, there is no enforcement. So if we're going to ride the slope of gray, we're really not ensuring safety. So I suggest no motorized vehicles and if there's legitimate handicap, there can be provisions for that. More enforcement. Thank you.
All right, okay. Next speaker, please.
My name is Colonel Stephen Sharma in the United States Air Force. I'm a Newport Beach resident. My concern is the critical mass of the situation and if there should be a ban on this critical mass, what should happen is a, kind of an enforcement of that value such that we create efficiency in our community. Again, the critical mass issue is a number density that was mentioned earlier and it is related to velocity and the calculation is quite difficult. So if there is a move to create this, you know, system where there's a avoidance of the critical mass number, then the community will benefit and it will be a safer place for all of us. So just, I do agree with keeping these vehicles, but there should be, again, a critical mass number that is calculated to prevent a rapid feedback of these things in our community. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thanks for your time. My name is Mike Atan. I live on your sixth and the boardwalk. I'm on the boardwalk all the time. And I told myself the last few years, I think these electric bikes have doubled, that somebody's going to get hurt. Well, I was on my way to dinner, just like I do many evenings, you know, using the boardwalk in front of my house, and what happened is, electric bike hit me and never stopped and broke my hand and I got permanent damage, just getting out of physical therapy. And what I realized is, I'm not an engineer here, there's other people who could probably answer these questions, but it's simple weight and momentum. These things cannot, if a little kid jumps out on a regular bike, there's a 10-inch skid mark. These things can't stop in 10 inches. And there's no, this is simple, you know, these things weigh five to 10 times as much as a regular bicycle. So they cannot stop. They take up a much larger footprint and really, I think somebody said, "What an asset the boardwalk is," and it's being ruined by electric bikes. And these bikes can be in the alleyways, the side streets. If they can keep up at 30 miles an hour, then they can be on Balboa Boulevard, people ride there, there's, all the Road Racer bikes are out there, the people who want to go fast, that, that's the place to go. Once you get off of the boardwalk, over on seashore, there's plenty of room there for electric bikes, but they should be banned on the concrete strip of our boardwalk. I think it's, I think it's hurting one of the biggest assets and historically, really wonderful things about the peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jan Cobb. I live on the boardwalk. I'd like to talk to you about somebody that lives there. I live there full-time. I built a home there 20 years ago. My wife and I are retired and we live on the boardwalk full-time. I spend many, many hours every day sitting in it, on my front patio between 30 and 31st Street, right where it's busy. And I'm going to tell you, 15 years I've been there, electric bikes are not the problem. Okay, the problem is, when I first built my home and started living on the boardwalk full-time, what bothered me the most was the skateboards. Every time it's, I love the skateboards, I love the kids, but every time they hit those cracks in the sidewalk, it sounds like a gun going off. It's just noise after noise. And first, I called the police, I said, "In the last 30 minutes, we've had 21 skateboards. Could you do something?" Called again for years. Finally, I just gave up, because I know it's hard, my son's a police officer, it's hard to patrol, you know, everybody on skateboards. But to me, that's the main problem for somebody that lives on the boardwalk, because of the noise. At night, the middle of the night, it's just continuous noise. I am 76 years old. My wife and I both bought e-bikes. We ride the boardwalk every day. I sit out there and I watch the people. The skateboards are going too fast, the e-bikes are going too fast, the people on their 10-speeds are really going too fast. Everybody's got electric skateboards, they've got all this electric equipment and everyone is going too fast. The only way to solve this problem is to have more officers out there patrolling the boardwalk. You're not going to get rid of, of e-bikes, just like skateboards. You know, they're, they're just out there continuously and the officers, there's just not enough of them to control it. But, and I see that, I sit out there all day, I can see the people, the, the officers and their four-wheelers going down along the ocean, probably looking for people with alcohol or something, but they need to spend more time controlling the boardwalk. And when they do have the officers, they come by and I watch them all the time, they do stop the people with the skateboards and the, and the various things that are illegal and they do a great job, but you just need more people controlling the boardwalk. You can't eliminate e-bikes. I wouldn't be able to ride with my knees at 76 years old. I mean, it's, I think it's wonderful that you have the e-bikes, because my wife and I ride them all the time, but you just need to control the speed of everybody. And the darned 10-speed bicycles are going faster than anything down that boardwalk. And, and like one of the gentlemen said, on weekends, it's horrible, because you've got the little kids. And what's dangerous is they don't even, they're riding their little, little, little bikes and they're just going this way and that way, because they just come down a week. they're just going this way and that way, because they just come down on weekends. I mean, the whole thing is dangerous, and you just need more police officers controlling it. But I love e-bikes, and they're not the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right, well, I have a, my name is Maureen Cotton. I live on the peninsula for the last 20 years. I'm the president of the Central Newport Beach Community Association. We represent the people that reside along 90% of the boardwalk. I've gotten dozens and dozens of calls and emails from our members who are vehemently opposed to the, to electronic bikes, scooters, et cetera, because of the weight. A lot of people have discussed it. You've got a 200-pound bike and 160-pound person, they hit a child, the city's going to have a liability, because all of these are recorded, and this conversation has been had many, many times, over and over, and recorded. So the city's kind of aware of it. There's no way to deny that you guys are aware that there's a problem, and it's been brought to your attention. I don't disagree with either of the people who have indicated that they've got mobility issues as they age, and I agree. If you can get a handicap sticker for your car, your bike, et cetera, then yes, there should be the ability for those people, because I don't see them being prone to going 20 miles an hour. The problem is everybody else, and that's 90% of it. There are governors that we've had discussions five years ago, that allegedly, the renting community on the e-bikes on the, in the peninsula were going to do. Whether or not those governors were ever installed on the bikes, I have no idea. But what I've seen on the boardwalk are incidents, people knocked over, people with broken hands. It's really, really genuinely hazardous. We have, the reality is, there is an enforcement issue, right? Because we already say no skateboarders, we also say no motorized vehicles. Under the California Vehicle Code, which was part of your presentation, the definition of an electric bicycle is a bicycle equipped with fully operable pedals and an electric motor. Therefore, already, e-bikes are banned from our boardwalk because it says, no motorized vehicles. It's not a void in our law. We already have it covered under our municipal code. It's just not being enforced. And part of that is because of the lack of direction that our police department has been given, because there, there's been this ambiguity amongst staff whether an electric bike is motorized. It is in fact motorized because the California state says it is. California Motor Vehicle Code says it is. Therefore, the police, in my conversations with Lieutenant Moore and others, it's hard for them to give a ticket for someone going eight miles an hour, because they don't have the devices like they do on the freeway to say you're going eight, or 10, or 20, or 30 miles an hour. So it makes it difficult for them. It's much easier, and you guys can see in the statistics of the number of tickets that are given by our Peninsula Enforcement Team, that 90% of the tickets on the boardwalk are to skateboarders. Less than 10% is to speeding people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Hal Pizer, 29-year resident of Newport Beach and seven-year owner of Pedago Corona Del Mar. Part of our mission when we opened up Pedago Corona Del Mar was based on our motto, to have fun, but more importantly, and a very imperative, was safety for all the people that we sell to, service, rent, and even provide tours to. We provide tours to outside residents, guests to Newport Beach, anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000 guests that are staying at our hotels. And what better way to showcase Newport Beach than on an electric bike? If you want to put them in a, in 2,000 cars driving around Newport Beach and showing, showcasing Newport Beach that way, that's another alternative. But this is a clean, safe way. We, whenever we conduct our tours, we keep all our guests on the boardwalk to eight miles per hour. That's mandatory for us, and we've never had an incident in any of our tours. And getting, giving these guests a fun and safe time. Unfortunately, if we happen to move electric bikes off the boardwalk, there really isn't an option or alternative there. There is Balboa Boulevard, however, there is no bike lane on either side, and it's not very safe. So actually, you're seeing no electric bikes at all on the peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Do I get bonus points for following directions and getting in line for the second podium?
Well, you lost three seconds, but go ahead.
My name is Don DiCristano. I'm a, I got to Newport Beach as fast as I can. I wasn't born here, but I'm a 1975 graduate of Corona Del Mar. I started an electric bike shop on the peninsula in 2007 called Z Eclipse. I've been selling electric bikes ever since 2007. In 2008, I founded Pedago, and we sold almost 100,000 electric bikes, most of them to people that are my age and older. And I think that's important, because this has not been a problem until the younger people figured out electric bikes are fun, and they don't necessarily have to pedal. But California led the nation with the passive AB 1096, and despite some earlier testimony, the bikes are not that much heavier. Regular bike, average bike weighs about 35 pounds, and electric bike weighs about 55 pounds. So there is 20 pounds difference. That's the addition of the motor and the battery. The riders typically weigh 200 pounds, so relationally speaking, it's certainly not 10 times. And they are classified as non-motorized vehicles now by the California Vehicle Code, thanks to AB 1096. And Matt Harper from Huntington Beach helped us write the legislation for California. We sponsored the bill. It passed the California Assembly 80 to nothing, and the Senate 40 to nothing, and Governor Brown signed it into law, saying that electric bikes are not in fact motorized vehicles, they're called low-speed electric bicycles. So they've got their own code, even though they technically have a motor, by definition, they're not. But take the legal part about it. I think the main issue here is safety. You know, I started renting electric bikes in 2007. We have never had a single claim against us, against any incident of happening where somebody got hurt. I'm not saying it doesn't happen, it happens on regular bikes as well. But the real issue is, now that electric bikes have gone to a much younger audience, they're a little more abusive, and unfortunately for the graying population, it's going to put us at risk to losing right to, or the ability to ride on a bike path, which, while I respect the rights of the residents there on the bike path there along the shore there, it's the property of everybody, all the residents of Newport Beach, of which I'm a resident of Newport Coast. So how do we work to make the bike paths safer? I think that's the most important thing. We've heard it over again, speed's the issue. You know, how can we get everybody to obey the eight mile per hour thing? Huntington Beach uses blinker lights, their speed is 10 miles an hour, they've got blinker. They make people walk in the danger zones when it's really crowded. That's an option. We could put strips on the, on the path, asking people to slow down. If they were banned, I think it would create a bigger safety problem, as mentioned earlier. When I testified in Tiburon a few, about two years ago when this law passed, they wanted to push all the electric bikes out on the street. Tiburon Boulevard is about the safest Balboa Boulevard. They, the attorney there and the city said that would be, the police chief said that would be far more dangerous having these electric bikes on the street than it would be in fact on the bike path. So we'd like to work with the city to find workable solutions for improving safety, but let's not punish the law-abiding citizens that are, you've heard from many of them here tonight, that are abiding the law and riding at eight miles an hour on the bike path. I'd be one of them for the past 13 years. I'm abiding. Now, have I gone 10 miles an hour, 12? Yeah, probably. But I always try to keep it at a reasonable speed, and sometimes of the day, there's nobody on the bike path, so going 10 or 12 miles an hour is not the end of the, end of the earth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Aaron. I've lived on the peninsula for several years, and I take care of short-term rentals, which I know is another hot topic of discussion. I chose to have an e-bike two summers ago because of the nature of my job, traveling up and down the peninsula and taking care of our guests' needs. I choose not to ride my bike on Balboa Boulevard because of the safety. There's no bike lane, there's merging lanes, and obviously, people are on their phones not paying attention. There's a few problems with all this. I see the rise in electric mobility, there's a rise in traffic on the boardwalk, just like when driving a car past an elementary school. I ride past Newport L every single day, and I slow down, especially if it's during school hours. Even if it's not during school hours, as a resident of the peninsula, I do know where people are, heavy traffic moving in and around. I do agree with the gentleman who mentioned that the rental companies, if you've never been on an electric bike and you get on one for the first time, it is a little bit much, and I think it is for the uneducated folks that are causing a lot of these problems, our visitors coming to town and getting on a bike and just taking off, thinking that there's no rules. There are rules, and they have to be followed. Some of the other really dangerous devices that don't pertain to electric bikes, because again, I can't emphasize enough that the problem is not electric bikes. There's devices called a one-wheel, which is one wheel with a platform. They, I've ridden one personally, and they are fairly dangerous and pretty crazy to ride, electric scooters. And what I call the most dangerous are electric skateboards, where we see people riding up and down the boulevards with full-face helmets and gear on, which is just out of control. I also see these Segway tours in lines of 10 to 12 segways, back-to-back, taking up space on the boardwalk. As me, or someone to go around people, how am I supposed to go around these people, even if I am going eight miles an hour? There's groups of 10 people taking up the space. Although, easier said than done, I believe that the larger solution to this, as mentioned by city staff briefly, is to widen the path, like I've seen in other high-dense populated cities. This will create a walking lane and a bike lane on the path, and it'll allow for bikes on the inside and pedestrians on the outside, and then it's an education with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Dale Shepard. I'm resident of the peninsula, frequent rider for many, many years. I think we need to start with Mitch Dixon's comment earlier about this being a walkway, and that always should be top of mind. It's an interesting collection of comments here, I've seen both sides, and I'm not sure where I stand, because I am, I've had an electric bike in the past, and I enjoyed using it, but at safe speeds. The observations I've made are similar to what I just heard a few minutes ago. The skateboards, electric skateboards are probably the most dangerous mode of transportation on the boardwalk at this time. I think the, for the most part, the electric bikes I've seen have been ridden fairly safe. To your point, Mayor, the difference between electric bike and a normal bike is the acceleration, and it starves and frightens people. Not that I've seen a lot of incidents and accidents, but I've seen a lot of people frightened by that. You can immediately start those bikes and take off, and that's been an issue for me, as well as my family. So that's, that's, sets that apart. The, from a solution standpoint, I think we need better signage to educate the people, particularly the ones that are from out of town. I wouldn't rely on the business operators, because I don't think that's happening. We have plenty of stories going up and down the boardwalk, and those seem to be a problem as well. That's never enforced, and I don't think the operators of these businesses are telling these people not to ride on the boardwalk. The signage is small, and it's not very noticeable. I think from an enforcement standpoint, you're going to have a lot of challenges, I've not seen much of that, and I wouldn't expect to. But if you did this at, for instance, McFadden, you have plenty of people riding through that square, if we could crack down on that, where people are actually walking, where it's supposed to be, they're supposed to be walking, a walking zone. It's an enforcement opportunity, it's an education opportunity. It's not just electric bikes that are violating that, of course, it's also people riding bikes, pedal bikes. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dennis Baker, and I am a bicyclist, and I do not have an electric bike, and I have been radared on my bicycle. And that actually happened quite a few years ago in Huntington Beach. So there is technology to measure the speed of a bicycle. That's not so hard. What I'd be interested in is what staff has found out from talking to other cities such as Huntington Beach. So Huntington Beach, for many years, has had a walking policy at the pier because of congestion, and as I said, I don't know if they still do it, but I have been radared, and I didn't, I don't think I suffered anything from getting hit by the microwaves. But a radar gun can measure the speed of a bicycle. So I think that, that their tools are there, and the way that you deal with people that are jerks and abusing things is enforcement. I mean, really comes down to it. The reason that I don't go 45 miles an hour down Balboa Boulevard is because there's a lot of enforcement out there to keep the speed down, and then people know that. So I think it's really going to come back, because I appreciate what you're trying to do, but it's really, really, really hard to get people to obey the law unless there's some enforcement. On a final positive note, I am a neighbor to the gentleman from Corona Del Mar, Pedago, and when they first moved in, there were some issues with sidewalk use and so on and so forth, and to their credit, they made adjustments to how they do it, they launched their tours out of the back, they encouraged their people to go out of the back. So I only occasionally see some jerk riding the wrong way up carnation on the sidewalk, returning back to there, but that number is very small. So I truly accept what the vendors are saying, that they're trying really hard, and I think it's worth giving them the credit of the doubt, the benefit of the doubt. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Larry Tucker, and I own four Pedagos, so, but I only ride one at a time, and usually within the speed limit. The issue obviously is, is speed, and, which I always kind of make an effort to stay within the eight miles an hour, somebody my age would expect to do. And quite frankly, I see a lot of regular bikes zooming by me, and I don't see very many electric bikes to begin with. I think the population of regular bikes is much greater than electric bikes. So it really is a situation where I think all bikes should be treated the same, whether it's your own power or somebody else's power. The real issue is, is that, you know, why would bikes be treated differently? Why would electric bike riders be deemed lawless, but those that pedal their own bike somehow law-abiding? The other thing that was interesting to me, that I really expected to hear, was some type of census as to what staff sees out on the bike paths, as to who's speeding and who isn't speeding. The electric bikes are fairly easy to pick out, because they have, you know, the battery packs. But before you would make any effort, I think, to treat electric bikes differently than regular bikes, you should at least do a study to figure out what your real problem is. The people that live down there are frustrated. I think they're kind of aiming at regular bikes. Maybe they're right. I don't think they're right, but you won't really know until you try to determine, well, which type of bike is it that's causing a problem? And I think if you did that, you would probably find out that, you know, that the speeders are not necessarily electric bike riders. I think it's fairly well distributed amongst people that ride the bikes, mainly because eight miles an hour is pretty easy to go beyond. It just, it's not very fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ken Rosson. Let me take you back a little bit of history here. Last year, Mayor Dixon held a meeting up in her office area, invited a number of us from the boardwalk area, and also peer-to-peer, Maureen was there, and a number of her members. Brian Moore, the lieutenant commander for our area down there on the district, spoke to us and explained why that he's having trouble enforcing speed limits on the boardwalk. And he said, I can't write a ticket and enforce it in court unless I have a radar gun. And in order to put a radar gun on the boardwalk, I have to have either a motorized motorcycle or I have to have a car. That's a major event for me to schedule and put together. Now, he took the challenge up, because we, as a collective group, really erred our displeasure with the speed that's happening on the boardwalk, and the fact that we've got skateboards on the boardwalk, but we wanted to try to slow down the electric bikes. I'm a proponent for electric bikes, but I can't get them to slow down. I live on the boardwalk, I'm privileged enough that I get to use the boardwalk daily, and I'm telling you, it's a problem. In this last year, it just keeps growing and growing faster, the number of people we have. And as electric bikes have gotten cheaper, now we have a number of younger, I'm going to say in the 12 to 16-year-old range from the Peninsula Point, come out surfing in the morning at 6:30, and they're going to their spot down at the point, and they're riding flat out. They're 20 miles an hour, if they got a 20 mile an hour bike, or if they got the pedal bike with the throttle, they're doing 28. And they're flat out to get there, do the half hour, 45 minutes of surfing, flat out to get home, almost knocking me and my wife down as we're walking in the morning, consistent every morning. So I ask you, you're going to bring the chief up and let Chief Lewis talk to us about how you can enforce this? You've been hearing from us now for years, not just once or twice, but repeatedly. I've been on the boardwalk. We've got something different on Newport Beach than Huntington Beach and others don't have. You have homes right on the boardwalk. You have renters that come out with little kids. The little kids step out, or it could even be your own grandkids, step out from those patios, oblivious that there could be someone on the boardwalk. If that bike rider's doing eight miles an hour, I've seen them go over the handlebars, into the sand, and miss the little girl, and I go help the person get up and say, thank you for missing that child. When they're doing 20 miles an hour, they don't miss them, they hit them. And when they're doing 28 miles an hour, they really hurt them. And there, you've heard the stories, the people stood up here that are members of the boardwalk community down there, and they keep telling you over and over again, we're seeing people get hurt, and we're not stopping it. So I agree with that last gentleman. Is that what we need, is a study to really show? we need, is a study to really show how many people we have daily breaking the law? Brian Moore explained, hey, we did a study, we looked at it for a couple of days. A couple of days is not a study. If you're gonna do a study, you ought to really have a feel for what the violation count is, and who's doing it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Carmen Rosson. I find it interesting that most of the proponents for keeping the electric bikes are the ones that have the businesses. It's the same that we talked about the surries, although they knew there were no allow, in the boardwalk, they went ahead and bought the surries, and then they say, "Oh, forgive me, but allow me to still rent them." So they are not putting their, their perspective from the residents and the people, the kids that go to Newport L, or even that they use the boardwalk to go to Newport Harbor High School, or Enson, that use the boardwalks. I walk the boardwalk for four miles every morning, and I see it. And yes, electrical bicycles, you can go fast in a regular bicycle, but you have to be in good shape, and you may go fifteen miles per hour, and it's not everybody that can do that. With an electrical bicycle, if you can go twenty-eight miles, you cannot control it. So I will, my suggestion would be, please prohibit the electrical bicycles, and look for ways to enforce the speed for the regular bicycles and other means of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Council Mayor Dennis Bress, Bellbo Island. So I'm here to speak in not prohibiting motorized use on the multipurpose oceanfront boardwalk. It is a multipurpose oceanfront boardwalk, so there's a lot of different things going on, on that boardwalk. You have pedestrians, you have bikes, you have scooters, and a range of other things that are going on. But how do we address speed and safety? I think staff really did a good job on the overall presentation, but I think we need to dive into this deeper and get traffic engineers involved. So specifically, some solutions to entertain would be, before Bruce left, he said that there's one electronic speed sign on the boardwalk currently. I know when we're driving on Bayside, when we did that remodel, we do have a number of those electronic flashing signs. I think one of the issues is, people don't know how fast they're going. And if we had flashing signs at, say, every street, on both sides of that street pole, people then would be able to then recognize that they're going past the eight-mile limit, so they would know. And there's something about knowing that you're breaking the law, that you, if you don't want to break the law, you'd probably let off a little bit on speed. The second is, if we do have a revitalization budget, yeah, if we could finally widen that boardwalk, I don't know how much, but that would be wonderful, because then you don't have so much congestion on that limited width of the pad. So that would be something to consider. And then, number three, to update municipal code, so we have some official clarity on what is legal. So I heard that there's some federal code, there's some city and state code, state code, and then where we would fall in our municipal code. One of the things that I'm promoting is to use more alternative transit to cars in order to get from A to B. And one of the things I'd like to see is to have A-to-B buses, so that you could then use scooters and/or bikes to get from your home to one of these A locations, which could be the transit center at Fashion Island, or, say, at the base of Huntington Pier. And once you got to that location, you'd be able to then take that bus on a guaranteed path, straight to, say, Tusson Metro Link. So you knew if you made that stop on your electric scooter or bike, you'd be able to get on that A-to-B bus, and in twenty minutes, be at Metro Link. So these are things to consider for sure, but safety and speed seem to be the biggest things that we have to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, best for last. I'm Fred Levine. I've been a resident on the peninsula for over twenty-four years, and constantly come before the council about the complaints. There's a couple of things that kind of confuse me. We have a contingency here for the bike owners, but the real problem here is really speed and safety. And there are people talking from the coast. We have a problem that's on the peninsula. I'm sure all of you have visited. It's traffic, it's the kids, it's what's going on. And if we're not gonna be finding the right solutions, we could build newer boardwalk, widen, that's years away. We have a problem that's gonna start occurring in the next sixty to ninety days. We do have a bike problem. We do have an electric bike problem. And the people who own the electric bike companies, I don't expect them to be here, you know, saying how safe everything is. These bikes are going over fifteen to twenty miles an hour. That is a fact, fact. We have people and children getting hurt, animals are getting hurt, whether it's underreported or overreported. That's really the issue that's here. We need to find the real solutions. You know, we all have great opinions, but if we don't find these solutions soon, we have major, major summer coming up, and everyone wants to be on an electrical bike or a regular bike. We have a boardwalk that's like the four or five freeway. I said that many, many times. We have to find a reason and a solution to get this done. Maybe enforcement is the right issue. I'm not really sure. In reference to the blinking lights, they don't work. They put them up in part of the peninsula, and the people were racing to see how fast they can go, to beat that speed that they did before. That's not the right solution. Speed bumps, not the right solution. We're very bright, bright people in this room. We have to find a way to control what's going on right here on the peninsula and the boardwalk. One of them is, is maybe we should get the funding and give our police officers the right funding, and come up with a division, like they have a traffic division. Maybe there should be a division for the peninsula, which is funded, which will wind up paying for itself for the amount of tickets that you'll be giving. I, I just think it, it's really a very ser, I'm sitting there right on the beach every day, and I'm seeing what's going on. And I'm, please, please, this, we don't need more studies. We know by just coming down and looking what's going on. We do have a problem on the boardwalk. We all know it. Now let's come up with some solutions. More studies, we'll be studying this for the next twenty years. Everyone in this room knows there's a problem. And in due respect to economics, that's great that they have these great, great bike companies and electric bike companies, just like we wanted to put in seatbelts. It's not an economic issue. It's really the issue of safety for our children and residents. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Greg Hirsch from Newport Beach. I've been here ten or twelve years. I came down here in nineteen sixty-three. God bless my parents for bringing me to such a great city. I ride my Pedago from Belcourt down to the beach, across the ferry, and I ride on the Peninsula Path. It's one of my favorite rides, especially in the summertime. I'm courteous. I ride eight miles, miles an hour, but I need the electric assist to get back home, to get up the steep hill on Jamboree to get back to PCH. So please, if you can figure out a way to make this work, don't take it away from us. There's a bunch of people just like me that have bad knees, or can't do this otherwise. So if there's a way to do it, I know that all this time and effort that you put into it will pay off for all of us. Part of it's the herd effect. If you can stop people from going too fast, the word gets around, and it's the regular people that are trying to get to work. I see them out there. They're, they're on a mission. They're going back, you know, they're going to work, or they're trying to get somewhere. The surfers, I can understand, they're in a hurry. But if you enforce it for just a short time, and hand out some really significant fines and stop them, the herd effect will take over. It's kind of like, if you see one person doing it, then other people will also speed. So that's the only thing I haven't heard tonight, is if you could control it for a short time, you might be able to control it forever.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill. As you now know, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the speed issue that you asked for comment on, I, I would like to second Dennis Bress's suggestion of more flashing speed signs, provided that the speed signs do not say how fast you're going when you're going over the speed limit, but simply at that point, flash. Ideally, they turn color, red or something, telling you, "You are over the speed limit." I think people try to be law-abiding, but as a bike rider on occasion on the boardwalk, knowing whether you're at eight miles per hour, or seven, or nine, is, there's no way anybody knows. And this may seem radical, but I believe eight miles on a bicycle, eight miles per hour, seems very, very slow, and perhaps that speed limit is unrealistically low, causing people to ignore it. And this may, perhaps you should consider raising the speed limit slightly. Maybe it's at ten, people would, and actually, you had signs telling people when they were going over ten, they would actually pay a lim, attention to that limit. And as to the people who are in a hurry to get somewhere, rather than just enjoying a ride on the boardwalk, another speed solution is to try to let those people know that there, in many places, there are alleys that run parallel to the boardwalk. They're just a house away. The alleys are not crowded. I know personally, you can ride your bike faster without interfering with anybody on the alleys. So encouraging people to divert their bicycle traffic onto those where possible is another possible solution to avoid the congestion on the boardwalk. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak, come on up. Otherwise, this will be the last speaker. All right, go ahead.
Mayor and council members, my name is Peter Beck, and I am not a resident. I'm a seasonal resident of Newport Beach. I've been spending January and February on the boardwalk on the East Ocean Front. And we, we love your beautiful community. I'm very happy to be here. Actually, I went to the city's website to see, we were noticing all the speeding, significantly different than last year. And I just was curious if it had been a discussion item in the past, and I stumbled into this meeting. So just a couple of observations, as not a disinterested observer, but, but without anything in particular at stake here. It is an issue. I mean, I sit on our little deck in front of the place that, the small place that we rent, and there is, there are some pedal bikes that go, well, there are many that go over eight miles an hour. There are very few that are going at an unsafe speed, but almost every electric bike is, is, well, I would say they all are going more than eight, or, and, and most of them can significantly more than that. And we have seen several over the course of the last month and a half we've been here, races, you know, kids, and it's not just kids, adults also, racing the electric vehicles, and, and not just the bikes, but those three-wheeled, I don't know, whatever they are, they, they look like a golf cart on steroids or something, and they, they take up all of their lane, and, and, you know, the, the path just isn't adequate for that kind of use. A two-way, twelve-foot-wide, multi-use path can't support, in my opinion, that kind of speed. And, and there is a difference with the electric bikes. They go, it's, you know, ten miles an hour more, faster, fifty pounds or so more weight. It's, it's a difference. Some solutions, obviously, a second path, like many of the coastal communities have, would, would be a solution. I understand, I have some involvement with local government, I understand there's many challenges to that approach. I think the next step is to seriously consider whether to, to not allow motorized vehicles of any sort on there, because we see, we do see the skateboards, the one-wheelers, the scooters, and almost all of them are, are going, in my opinion, at an unsafe speed. Another approach might be, it is our observation that a lot of the bikes, in particular, in those three-wheel things, are rental vehicles. And I don't know if the city licenses those types of businesses. Many communities do, but that might be an approach. And do some enforcement through rental licensing, and, and consequences of speeding and accidents or so forth, falling back on, on the businesses that are renting these, the bikes. Speed enforcement, I, I, I have a little bit of experience with that. This can be very challenging, as I'm sure your police department has already advised them, like they've already advised you. And the last thought I had as I sat here was whether there would be an option to do, I've never heard of this, to do something like a photocop, you know, if you're licensing these vehicles, to put a sticker on them, like an EZ Pass-type thing, that can read a, a number and report a violation, and take that back to the rental company. So those are some of my thoughts. The bottom line is, it is definitely an issue, and it's impacting visitors like me.
Okay. All right. This will be the last speaker.
Good evening, council. My name is Max Johnson, twenty-five-year Newport Beach resident, currently reside in District One in the Peninsula Point community. In the topic of the e-bikes, you know, someone who, every single day watches the sunrise and sunset, and, you know, goes on the boardwalk, I do think that this is, you know, an issue. And I am grateful since 2015 that the state did pass their law, AB 1096, and obviously, it leaves us with discretion to, whether to ban the bikes or not. And I would say, I, I, I think with the, the speed issues, you know, Class I e-bikes can reach twenty miles per hour, and then two-e-bike, the Class II and Class III, I think are more concerning. Class I still, I think, is concerning with their ability to reach twenty miles per hour. But I think something automatically that comes to mind is banning Class III e-bikes that reach twenty-eight miles per hour. And I think that, you know, the, the suggestion from Jim Mosher, as well as, I can't remember who suggested it, but the flashing lights, I think, is a great idea. And another potential solution is, I think, working with all the business owners, Pedago, or the rental bike companies that reside on the peninsula, specifically heavily near the bars, or in that area, and make it a prerequisite that in every contract for electric bikes that are rented in the city of Newport Beach, that there's a pamphlet that they have to sign and acknowledge, maybe that their speed etiquette, or just these informational pamphlets for these tourists that may not be accustomed to riding such powerful motor, you know, bikes or scooters, that when they're renting these, that the companies that are renting them out, and having business in our city, that they're required to also hand these educational resources and make sure that they read through them and sign, so that there is, if there is anything down the road, that at least, I think through educational outreach with the business owners that are renting out these bikes, that we can make them hand that material to people that they're renting to. And then I think also, just as the decision, when a decision is made, I think, to continue to educate or to inform our community of what's going on, and maybe hold another forum, because I think this is a pretty important issue that is, I think, in the heart and minds of everyone in District One. And I think everyone has a story of a time where they were either hit or just raced, you know, an e-bike just raced by them. So, yeah, I think there was a lot of great suggestions tonight, and mine, I think, is increasing the educational enforcement, potentially making that prerequisite for the owner, business owners that are supplying a lot of these bikes, that I do know constitute for much of the violations of these vehicles that are over speed. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Last speaker for real.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill. My name is Liz McNabb, and council members, I am the district representative for Assemblywoman Cotty Petry Norris, and I was wondering at this time if non-agendized items, public comment, or is this specifically on the bike items?
No, specific on the bike items.
Specifically on the bike items, okay. I had a few updates from the Assemblywoman's workup in Sacramento, so I can leave them here for you with the clerk.
Yep, if you leave them with, yep, that works. Our city manager right there is perfect. Great, thanks. Okay, so we'll bring it back up here. Before I get back up, Mr. Harp, there's no way we're gonna be getting a closed session tonight, at least before the council meeting itself. So we'll, let's figure out whether we need to do that tonight, whether it can be pushed, if it needs to get, if it doesn't need to get pushed, then we need to, I'm sorry, if it needs to go tonight. And I'll leave that up to your discretion, then we'll have to go after the council meeting. All right. So, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I know from personal experience as well, that the testimony of many of you is true. Some people, often human-powered bicycles, bike recklessly and much too quickly, especially past children and groups of people, and so do people, I'm sure, on, on these powered bikes. But I'm not really interested in legislating sort of in a circular firing squad. I think it'd be better for us to address the real issue, in, in my opinion, which, which I believe is speed and safety. So I will not support adding any additional bans to this list, but I will suggest that there are measures that But I will suggest that there are measures that can be used, like specifically the one that I think would be the most effective would be speed bumps, whether they're rubber speed bumps, or whether they're concrete mounds. And they could be placed in front of the elementary school, near the piers, and they could be spread out in such a way so that no one has opportunity to gain a lot of momentum and speed between every speed bump. That's how I feel, staff. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
I just have a quick question for Public Works. Brad, could you give, what would the, in a minute, real quick, the viability of adding on to the boardwalk? Has that been, Dave, you probably have some?
As in, like adding, adding width?
Adding width. The viability is, it's been done in other cities, Long Beach, Huntington Beach has some areas of dual pass, that's something that we talked with at Diane's Town Hall, and the residents showed a favor for moving forward. So that's the study Brad referenced earlier. I think it can be done. The key there is really about, can we get consensus of the community, and where's the Coast Commission going to be at? We are on the beach, it's a very challenging area with the Coast Commission, but there are, there's presidents in other cities to do this.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a little bit to do with bringing this up, so, I kind of started with, five years ago, I think we just came up with allowing electric bikes that were pedal assist. And back then, you know, you could tell a pedal-assist bike real, real fast. They didn't go very fast, and you had to pedal them to get the assist. So we were sympathetic to that, and I think that we felt, well, you can't go that fast, so let them be on the boardwalk. Well, since that time, five years has gone by, I know a little bit about this, not much, electric boats, but we now have, we now have electric bikes that go 70-plus miles an hour. And, yeah, they're expensive, so you don't see a lot of people using them yet, but 70 miles an hour, just so you know, five years ago, they could not go 70 miles an hour. But now, you can buy one that will do that. The biggest thing our mayor asked, I think is very effective, very good question, is, what is the difference? What has happened? What's the difference between a pedal bike and a electric bike? Well, I can tell you in one, one word, throttle. When you have a throttle, and you don't have to pedal, that's a big difference. That's a big difference. And when you have the torque of an electric motor, which is 100% now, it's like a light switch, it's not like your car that has to struggle before it gives you the power. Electric bikes develop 100% torque now. It's not in a minute, or a second or two, or a delay, it's just now. So you take all the weight of a human being and the bike itself, and now you've developing enough kinetic energy to do a lot of damage. And to stop it, I've heard about people saying stopping, they don't stop that great. There's not a lot of surface on the, on a bike tire. It's, I lost both my front teeth on a bike. I rode for 40 years on bikes. I love bikes, I love electric bikes, I own an electric bike. I'm the first guy to tell you, to take a bike off of the boardwalk would be very sad, an electric bike, because it is fun to just barely pedal and go along, and look at the water, and look at the houses and such. However, it's very apparent to me that those days are over, they've ended. And sadly, we have electric bikes that go way too fast and are controlled with a throttle. You do not have to pedal them. That's a big difference. The next thing is, obviously, there's so many other electric things that are not just a bike, that can really hurt you, like a skateboard, et cetera, and a scooter. And so this is, this has completely changed the complexion of what it was five years ago, in my opinion. So until we can figure out how to enforce this, which I understand from our police chief is very difficult, the only logical thing for me to assume is, and we're not banning them from the city of Newport Beach, you can still ride your electric bike all over the place. It would just be that you can't use an electric skateboard, or an electric scooter, an electric bike, on this little stretch of boardwalk. So it's, it's not the end of electric biking, by any sense of the word. And so I just feel that it's not just bicycles, it's a lot of things, and the technology has changed, and it's going to get less expensive, cheaper to buy them, and there'll be more of them. And so that's my point, is that we come to grips with reality and technology, and our police chief's efforts in trying to slow everybody down. And if he can come up with a way to do it with enforcement, I'm all for it. But until he can, if he can't, then I think we have to do something and do it quickly. Thank you.
Okay. Hang on, hang on. Most of you have been here long enough to know how, no clapping, please, that'd be, I appreciate it. All right, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. We've heard a lot from everyone this evening on both sides of the issue, and I've been listening to these saying both sides of the issue now, in my sixth year of listening to this, and we have tiptoed through this issue, thinking, well, we don't want to add more enforcement, or add more regulation, and we're Newport Beach, and we don't like more regulation, but we're ignoring the reality of a situation that is affecting the quality of life of visitors, not just our residents, but visitors in Newport Beach. When I've spoken with the Pedego or electric bike people, and they spoke, they've spoken before my town halls, and before, I think we've had a couple of study sessions on this over the years, and we never seem to be able to move beyond this continued protracted discussion, is that I've heard about speed governors, where they, the rental companies, as well as the manufacturers, can put these governors on the rental. I don't know, and to Maureen's comment earlier, I do not know if rental companies are doing that. That only deals with those who are renting. I would like to make a generalized observation, I guess, that maybe our residents who own electric bikes are observing the speed limit, they're not going over eight. I've also heard it's hard to get it down to, you can't governor it, control it down to eight. I think 10 is the minimum that the governor, speed governor allegedly works, but in any of it, maybe technology has changed. So I think we're fooling ourselves if we think we don't have a problem out on this little pathway that's not even the designated width of a bike path. It is a walking path. But we've heard a lot of interesting ideas tonight, and some of our enforcement, and I just want to go through some of that I would recommend that we come back and listen to. Number one, I think, I mean, the signs say, Brad, you said, here we've got, it says, no, no, N-O means no, right? No, no. No motorized scooters, no skateboarding. But we not, we're not enforcing that. Nobody listens and reads these signs. Maybe if they had red lights around them, maybe they would. People are ignoring our laws, and we can't countenance that. Why do we accept that? I know the police are doing the best they can, as I said earlier this morning, this seems like this morning, earlier this afternoon. We cannot, we honestly, we obviously cannot have a police officer on every corner. We expect people to follow the rules. People are not following the rules. But we need to change some of the rules, I would recommend. For example, we need to codify what we're prohibiting, and that is motorized scooters, motorized skateboards. And I guess we cannot prohibit electric bikes, because they're not, they're not considered motorized bicycles anymore, is that it?
You can ban them.
Oh, all right, well, okay. Now, before we get to banning anything, this is some of the ideas that I might, I have. Larry Tucker was right, we need data. We did some data about three years ago, maybe it's been longer now, and maybe four years ago, to understand the vehicle traffic, the capacity issues on the boardwalk. Maybe, we certainly need data. I wonder, and I think this data from 2016 confirmed that the traffic capacity is the heaviest, obviously, in the summer months. I'm wondering if maybe this can be regulated on a seasonal-only basis. For example, and I'm just suggesting this for purposes of conceptual discussion, that we limit all bicycle, all bicycle, not just electric, but all bicycle riding between the hours, and I'm making this up, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, on weekends only, in the summer. So allows the junior lifeguard kids to ride their bikes during the week, and anybody to ride their bikes during the week. But that really, the problem times, I'm assuming, now, anyone could give me different information, if it's a seven-day-a-week problem, 24/7, 365 days of the year. But if it is just a summer program, I'm, problem, I would lean towards maybe a pilot experimental program, before we codify this into law, that we look at some other enforcement and regulatory scheduling about how people can ride their bikes. So people who like to ride their bikes in the morning, or in the evening, they would be able to do it within the speed limit. So that's one idea. I like the idea, I've seen this work in other cities, walking zones. We presently have a walking zone across McFadden Square that's not enforced. I see bikes there all the time, people riding bikes. Around Newport L should be a walking zone. Maybe there are other areas that should be a walking zone. Better signage. Now the Surrys. We've been talking about Surrys for six years. The rental companies still rent Surrys, and their customers still put the Surrys, ride the Surrys on the bike path, where they still get tickets. It's just like going around and around. Didn't Einstein say insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over again? This is what we do, is we give tickets, and people give, and they're visitors, and they get a ticket, and they're from out of town or another country, and they go, oh, I didn't know. The rental companies are responsible to do a stronger job of educating their patrons, that they cannot take a Surrey on the boardwalk. It's been outlawed, Mr. City Attorney, how long have we outlawed Surrys on the boardwalk? 30 years? Yeah. And they're, okay, so we're still talking about Surrys, because we're not enforcing. Flashing signs, good idea. Just as someone mentioned, when we did put the speed, flashing speed, speed signs that we see on Bayside, it became a contest to the competitive electric bike riders to see how fast they could go. So that didn't work, that had the opposite effect. So I like the idea of having some kind of, like, on the toll, on the toll road, that you can have some kind of an EZ Pass that is a control mechanism. Maybe there's some new technology, with technology changing, to identify who is speeding. And the fines, we must adjust the fines. They're just a traffic ticket that, $50, that nobody, and I don't even think they're Speed governor fines. So I guess what I'm saying is that I would like to propose staff could come back with a list of what we can do that strengthens enforcement, strengthens fines, eliminates motorized vehicles, and maybe we consider a pilot trial period this coming summer, where we limit, in some fashion, limit the hours of operation of bikes on the boardwalk. I mean, it is crazy to see this 405 freeway of vehicles and people, and it's just a problem waiting to happen. So what I'm trying to suggest is, I'm a meeting in the middle here, prohibit it during busy hours, and enforce it during all other hours. So that's my thought to staff today. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Here's my thoughts. I live on Babo Island, we've had a boardwalk there for over 100 years. We do not have this problem on the Babo Island boardwalk. The reason we don't have this problem is because bikes simply are not allowed. And if somebody does go on the Babo Island boardwalk with a bike, they get yelled at by people who live on the bayfront, they get yelled at by people who are walking, and they're embarrassed so much that they usually exit off of one of the street ends and get off the boardwalk. We have a safety issue here. We have a responsibility as a city council to take care of safety issues within our city. No doubt about it. I mean, it's one of our basic responsibilities as a council. I know it's not a popular solution, probably. I did tick marks on all your comments tonight, and whenever you do a survey on anything, and I've always said this, 50/50. And that's exactly what it is tonight. 50% of you are in favor of banning, 50% of you are not in favor of banning. I don't care how much data you gather, opinions are always going to be that way. We have to make a decision as a council. I agree 100% with my colleague Duffy, and his comments. There didn't used to be a problem, there is a problem now, and we've got to take care of it, and the problem's not going away. So if you haven't figured it out already by my comments, I would be very much in favor of adding to the list of prohibited vehicles on the boardwalk, skateboards, human and battery-powered electric bikes, hoverboards, segways, unless it is handicapped use, and get rid of this problem in our city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Prenter.
Well, I've only been here one year, so I haven't heard this for six years, but my primary concern is always public safety. And if we cannot ensure public safety, allowing this on the boardwalk, then we should just stop it until we can figure out how to do that. So as far as I'm concerned, we just ban it, and then we look at ways that if we can somehow safely bring it back, if we can build a wider boardwalk, if we can build another boardwalk, then we look at how we can enhance that for our community. But if we can't guarantee safety, we shouldn't be allowing it.
Okay. Let's see, I'll, so I'll speak real quickly. I think, generally speaking, the good rule of thumb is that the answer to people not following rules is not to add more rules. I, I mean, that just, that's never worked, and it's not going to work here. I think before banning something, we really need to get to the root of why we were concerned in the first place. And if the concern in the first place is speed, then, yeah, it needs to be, it needs to be a continued enforcement issue. And I heard what you said, Councilmember Duffield, that wasn't, wasn't quite what I was asking, the difference between them. I was trying to find out the uniqueness, and I understand the point of torque. I mean, what you're describing is the amount of time it takes from getting from one speed to another. But that's not quite the issue. The issue here is trying to get, trying to figure out people going above eight miles an hour. And I mean, it's the same thing when you're on the road, you have a Honda Civic versus a Tesla. Tesla's going to get there a lot faster, to 60 miles an hour, but that's the whole point of a, of a speed limit on the road. Just because something gets to 60 miles an hour faster doesn't mean you ban it. It means that you make sure that they're not going over 60 miles an hour. And that's the, that's the issue of torque. And so I also will say, I'm, I'm not comfortable in any regard banning something that helps people who have physical disabilities, even if they can't quite get to the point of being declared handicap for a sticker or placard. I'm not comfortable telling them that they're not allowed on our, getting, getting places in a convenient way, which is less than, as long as they're following that eight mile an hour rule. So it sounds to me like it's an enforcement issue. I have no doubt that our police department, you know, we, we give all of the, we give our police chief, under our code, entire, he has the authority to determine how to allocate proper resources in order to enforce what's already on the books. I trust him to do so. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't support modifying it either. I think this is an enforcement issue. But I'll tell you what, why don't you bring back the slide that showed proposals, and we can at least do a straw poll and see which, which direction we can bring this back on? All right, so if, if your preference would be to maintain current restrictions, not bring this back for further modification of the code, raise your hand. All right, two. If your preference is number two, go ahead and raise your hand. All right, we have four. If your preference is number three, raise your hand. You can vote multiple times, by the way, just to be clear. Okay. If your preference is number four, raise your hand. If your preference is number four, raise your hand. That's correct. That's what I just said. You can mul, you can vote multiple times.
Now, I voted for the speed bump option.
Okay. And that's, that's fair. If there isn't, if there's something not on this. Okay, so speed bump option, potential for a speed bump option, raise your hand. Or a structural change. You got that? Okay. Is there anything else people would like to get a show on, on this one?
To have a pilot type of program, just to see, just a thought, just to kind of...
Is the pilot program, full prohibition of bicycles on the entire boardwalk during a certain amount of time?
Time period during the summer months only.
Okay. Let me see, show of hands for that, if you'd support that.
Nope.
Okay. Any others? Let me ask, let me ask this. Is there, would there, right now, it's $50 fine for violating, is there a, is there an appetite for discussing increasing the fine that hasn't been increased since 2001? I thought that might get there. All right. Yeah. That's the power of the mayorship. All right, so we'll...
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
Number two, it says allow electric bicycles to be used without power assist. I just wanted to make sure everyone is on board with that second bullet point, the people that voted for number two.
I think, I think everybody read it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add myself to number three.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay. All right. Staff, with those, with that direction, I'll, we'll see you again. All right. So right now, we're going to go to public comments on non-agenda items. So just as a note, we're, we're about to start the next meeting in about seven minutes. If, you know what, I'll tell you what, we'll give 60 seconds. If you'd like to get, we're just going to pause for 60 seconds. If you'd like to get up and take off, go right ahead. We'll just, we'll just wait just a minute before we, to let people exit. Okay. All right. So just a quick note, I know we've got a couple of folks coming. No problem. Sir, if you want to come to that mic, that'd be great. If you're here and would like to do non-agenda comments, just so you know, we're about to start the next meeting in five minutes, so you can do it at that meeting as well. But anyway, all right, go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, again, my name's Peter Beck, and as I mentioned, I'm not a resident. Just a question of whether there's ever been any discussion about the possibility of some kind of restroom facilities at the wedge.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll answer that, and just, I'll tell you what, actually, our city manager will be able to answer that for you if you go off to the side over there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Yes, thank you, esteemed council members. My name's Stephen Sharma. I'm a physicist, first and foremost, and the demo proto-reactor design that is replacing San Onofre, or that should replace San Onofre Power Plant can provide the state of California with about 500 megawatts of power. Now, we pay 10 to 12 cents per kilowatt hour for our electricity, and a nuclear fusion power plant charges 1.2 cents per kilowatt hour, which would save a factor of 10 on every single electric bill that this city pays. Now, the plans are worked out by IAEA, or International Atomic Energy Agency Partners, Eder Reactor Partners, and European Commission Partners. The project at San Onofre should be at San Onofre National Laboratory, and I've discussed this with the San Onofre Power Plant Commissioner and Decommissioner. The state of California lost $350 million to bad nuclear policy, and in a letter to Jerry Brown, and also a letter to our governor Gavin Newsom, I suggested replacing our fossil fuel supply with a nuclear fusion supply, and a supergrid of superconducting helium, yttrium, barium, copper oxide wires that will provide us lossless electricity. We lose 40% of our electricity in copper wire jewel heating, and we can save a tremendous amount of money by switching to this alternative energy source, part of an environmental movement. So the take-home message is the demo proto-reactor at San Onofre, and if you're ever interested in nuclear fusion, please come talk to me and my company, and, and let's start thinking about detoxifying our community and making this a less toxic community for our future generations and for everyone, because all men are created equal, we all have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and also fundamental United Nations rights. So one of those things is clean power, another one is clean water, so this should be part of that project. If you have any questions, just, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to me. I'm very thankful for being a Newport Beach resident, and this community has done quite a bit, and I do appreciate your kindness. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers on non-agenda? Okay. Go ahead, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So because we're bumping right up, I'm going to use A1 and just move our closed session to the back of the agenda. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll start our, our meeting probably around 7:05. Good evening. Welcome to Newport Beach. Welcome to our 7 o'clock regular meeting of the February 11th, 2020 council meeting. Madam Quirk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay. Tonight, we'll have the invocation from Reverend Dr. George Okusi from St. John the Divine Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember
Let us pray. Dear wise and loving God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here, and thank you for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish this evening. We have ideas and visions and everything that we want to offer. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. We pray that you strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be, set us free for the all-city leaders and departments to work together as a family for efficient delivery of goods. Lord, we know that our city has issues that are ongoing and are managed by different departments for our own good. We pray not even forgetting the coronavirus that has become among us. We are also praying and mourning the nine crushed victims, and we pray for their families at the same time. We pray that our leaders will make wise and godly decisions, which will always be in the interest, the best interest of our community. Bless the city government, the mayor, the management, and all elected officials, and those who put themselves in harm's way, like our law enforcement officers, firefighters, EMS workers, and fast responders. We pray for our mayor and all the councilmen and women, for the various levels of city, and various levels of city officials, asking God to graciously grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. Bless this meeting, oh, God, and the agendas that we have before us, and even those whom we know and we don't know, who want something to be done in this city, bless each and every one of us. Make us ready to take every moment and use it to glorify your holy name, for we pray, saying, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Madam Quirk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
All right. Now is the time for city council announcements and oral reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. Hurtman.
We had our monthly aviation committee meeting, and we've had several meetings of our newly established subcommittees, which are a part of the aviation committee. They include the technical departure subcommittee, the government relations subcommittee, and the education outreach subcommittee. Hard-working group of people, dedicated group of people to solving the problem of overflight noise in our city, and coming up with quality-of-life solutions for those people that are subjected to overflight noise from John Wayne Airport. I'm proud of their work. We have completed an update, coincidentally, we're talking about this, on boardwalk signage on Babo Island. We've come up with an agreement on what the sign, how the signage should read, and the size of it, the location of it, and work has begun on the production of that signage. Also, on Marine Avenue, Dave Webb and his department have begun the process of removing non-used news racks, which is really an, an advantage to people who use the sidewalk on Marine Avenue, people who park on Marine Avenue and try and get out of the passenger side of their cars with the absence of these unused news racks. It's a good thing that's happening. And then water quality. I updated the mayor last week on the work of our water quality, Tidelands Committee here in the city, and one of the things that I mentioned to him was that the quality of the water in our bay is as good right now as it was back in the 1950s. And Will responded back to me, saying, "How do we get the word out on this?" So I thought with my announcements tonight, it would be very appropriate to make that announcement and let the community know that this committee, the work of our staff, the work of the county in terms of managing water quality within our harbor, has resulted in us having quali, the quality of water in our harbor as good as it was when I was a kid, and we should be proud of that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, I, in furtherance of the mayor's recognition, volunteer recognition program, I recognized a community volunteer, Barbara Sloot, who has worked many hours at Oasis and also now serves on the county human relations commission, no, seniors, excuse me, senior, senior, senior committee. And so after the meeting, she sent a letter to me that I'll put into the public record, but she said she was a little nervous speaking, and she did want to express her appreciation for the proclamation that she received at our council meeting. And because she's a novice at public speaking, she wanted to be sure that we all understood, the public understood, that she did, how, the gratitude that we seniors, she was speaking on behalf of the seniors in our city, have for the city council's support of the Oasis Senior Center, and we are truly grateful for the incredible staff at the center. And she goes on to express her gratitude for the senior center, for the staff, for the leadership at the center, and she regretted that she didn't make those comments public, so I'll submit that for the public record. Last Thursday, I attended the SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments Regional Transportation Policy Meeting. I serve as a member of the Policy, Transportation Policy Meeting in Los Angeles. So speaking of transportation, driving to Los Angeles for a 9:00 a.m. meeting is not fun. But anyway, I, I'm glad I went. It was a very good meeting about future transportation issues in our region. And then many of you, all of us, frankly, heard of a tragic story last week with the fire that destroyed the entire contents of Working Wardrobes, an amazing nonprofit organization that provides a great service to our region, and it suffered a tremendous loss. A fire destroyed the organization's Irvine headquarters and its inventory of donated items. Newport Beach staff has reached out to the city of Irvine to see how we might assist with collecting donations, and we'll keep everyone updated. But in the meantime, there are a number of ways to support Working Wardrobes as it rebuilds. You can rebuild its inventory is most important. You can visit workingwardrobes.org, and I think the information is here on the screen, workingwardrobes.org, for information on donations and opportunities to volunteer. The organization is accepting monetary donations through its website, and clothing donations at a temporary center in Santa Ana at the Goodwill Fitness Center, 1201 East St. Andrew Place. So I reached out to the city of Irvine folks, and Grace has, our city manager has as well, and I hope that we can be helpful. I mean, literally, their wardrobes, their inventory was wiped out, and the organization provides clothing, particularly in our conversations about homeless and stabilizing their lives and getting them homeless into housing. They also need to have the wardrobes who go into some form of work at some point when they are, their lives are stabilized, and organizations like Working Wardrobes provides that, those clothing wardrobes for people returning to work, and it's a great organization. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon? All right, Ms. Brenner?
It's interesting that you were talking about water quality, Jeff, because after our 9 o'clock meeting this morning, I went down and walked around the island, and I have never seen the water so clear. In fact, I wish I had sent Leilani some of the pictures that I took, because you could walk around the island and see the sand down into the middle of the channel practically. It was beautiful. So good work, and good work to the Harbor Commission. One of the things I've been working on is historical preservation, and when I was helping to clean out my friend, former mayor John Cox's garage after his passing, we found memorabilia, and I realized we didn't have a place that our governmental history of the city has been housed. And so I've been working with Tim Heatherton, who heads our library, and we've met with Shirley Pepus at the Babo Island Museum, and we've met with Janet Ray, who's head of the Library Foundation. We're going to meet with Arlene Greer and, of the Arts Commission, and apparently, the Arts Commission is charged with preserving our cultural heritage, so we're all getting together to talk about that. And that led to my meeting with the Historical Preservation Subcommittee of the Corona Del Mar Residents Association, and they are working with Paul Wormser of Sherman Library and the CDM Historical Society to get as many of our historic cottages and sites registered as possible. They got the Golden, Goldenrod Bridge listed on our city historical site, and we have asked for assistance from Lee Ramos of the Orange County Historical Society to get it listed on the county site. So our CDMRA Historical Preservation Group is also working with some other CDM sites to get them listed, such as the Kircoff Lab at China Cove, the Five Crowns, which was formerly the Hurley Bell when I was a kid, and the library at Sherman Gardens itself. And we've also reached out to Oasis to encourage them to begin an oral history program, which I will be proposing at their March board meeting. Just talking to Mike Zimmerman about some of the stories that they have there is so fascinating, and so I think we'll be able to work with them to get that, get that going. And speaking of Sherman Gardens, Ron Yeoh, who has been photographing all of our historic cottages in Corona Del Mar, is also an artist, and he has an exhibit at Sherman Library and Gardens, and it's from February through April, and it's jungle junk critters. And I've seen... And I've seen these in his office or his studio, and now he's got them in the gardens. It's a great place to take the grandkids for a, a little tour of the gardens. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Duffield?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to recuse on item seven.
We're not quite there yet.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Avery? Yep, just announcements.
Thank you. Standing in for the mayor, I had the distinct pleasure of witnessing the Newport Beach Lifeguards' annual tryouts for the position of seasonal ocean lifeguards this past weekend. About 100 young men and women showed up around 07:30 Sunday morning. If you remember, it was kind of cold and rainy, which I thought was a great sign to see 100 kids show up at 07:30 in the morning when it's storming. At the Carlson Lifeguard Headquarters, the base of Newport Pier, the day was stormy, easterly winds generating a strong chop to swim against. The water was 57 degrees, and for the thousand-mile ocean swim, which was followed, that was followed by a thousand meter, a thousand-meter ocean swim and a thousand-meter run-swim contest. The top 50 combined scorers from both events won an interview to begin the hiring process, which includes 110-hour training program. So during that morning, the lifeguard, Newport Beach lifeguard values became apparent: fitness, accountability, community service, and a great attitude. There were plenty of connections on the sand. There were families, friends, neighborhoods, basically, and schools. All these groups were represented. And Richie Remlinger, a Newport Harbor High sophomore, finished first in both events and the tryouts. A really impressive performance. But it's not so much of a surprise, because Richie and his family live in Newport's shores, and he went to Newport L., then Carden Hall before moving on to Harbor High, and he is the third Remlinger brother to participate in the seasonal guard program, and his younger sister will be going through the junior guard program. It's quite a legacy that he's, he's following. So my thanks to Fire Chief Jeff Boils, Lifeguard Assistant Chief Mike Halfide, and Battalion Chief Brian O'Rourke, and the entire team for a great morning. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say a quick thanks to CERT, Speak Up Newport, and the Chamber for allowing me to come and speak at the CERT Awards, the Christmas Boat Parade Awards, and the Mayor's Dinner. I was also able to speak with teenagers this past week at the Mayor's Youth Council and the Assistance League, so thank you very much for having me there as well. Over the last couple of weeks, I've attended a number of vigils, memorials, and I've seen some of the best that our community has been able to offer in times of true tragedy. I can just point out that our local schools have been fantastic. I know our principals at Corona Del Mar High School and Newport Harbor invited me to come in to a moment of silence before they had a Battle of the Bay game, and so that was, that was touching. You could hear a pin drop. And then I and Police Chief and Fire Chief and members of our lifeguards attended the Jersey Retirement for Alyssa Altobelli. The folks at Ensign Intermediate have been, have been struggling. That was, it's an amazing thing to watch 13 teenagers get up and talk about all the emotions that they're going through during that process, and so we need to wrap our arms around them. The Altobellis had a memorial service yesterday at Angel Stadium, where probably 2,000 to 3,000 people were there, celebrating the lives of the Altobellis. And for the next couple of weeks, Newport Coast Community Center is going to be lit up in purple and gold through the, through the funeral service for, for the Bryants. So with that, there are a few slides. So the first slide, we have a community meeting and resident survey next Tuesday, the 18th, at 6:30 at Marina Park, to discuss the CDBG five-year consolidated plan. That is federal funding, so it's a discussion about where, what the priorities ought to be for that particular funding. The next slide. We're going to be discussing youth homelessness through teaming up with Project Hope Alliance. That'll be Thursday, February 27th, from 6:00 to 7:00. This will be in the Friends Room, which is on the other side of the Central Library right next to us. And then final slide. Just so everyone knows, City Hall will be closed on Monday, February 7th, in observance of President's Day. So with that, we'll go into Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 18. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Fears must limit comments to three minutes before speaking. Please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by our council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, Mr. Hurtman?
I have none.
Ms. Dixon?
Well, as we spoke at the beginning of the study session, item number seven related to the harbor code, I spoke on some additional requests I have of the Harbor Commission, and Mr. Muldoon did as well. So how will that be trans?
Clarification.
Yep, that clarification request. So, Mr. Hart, maybe you could explain, because I-
Is that transmitted to the Harbor Commission?
I think that you just briefly incorporated into the motion on the consent item, the, what you'd like have them, have them look at. I believe they're already looking at the marine activities permit and the commercial uses, so I'm not sure if that needs to be included or not, but you're welcome to include that.
Yes.
And then I believe Councilmember Muldoon wanted the Harbor Commission to also look at the commercial leases and, and you had another item of that as well.
Encroachment docs?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Encrochements.
And encrochements.
And city manager signing authority.
City manager signing authority. And that's, that relates to commercial leases as well.
Thank you.
And then, so we don't need to pull it. I just want to make sure that's transmitted. Thank you.
It's transmitted.
Did you understand, then, Mr. Avery, when you make the motion? I just want to make sure before we skip over. I just want to make sure you caught everything, because you'll make the motion. Okay. Ms. Brenner?
I'd like to pull item three for discussion.
Okay. Mr. Duffield?
I need to recuse on item seven for business interest, and item 11. I'll, I'll pass.
Pass doesn't vote no.
So as in, it's, sorry, recusal? Oh, no, okay.
Item 11's being continued to the first meeting in March.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I skipped over. Mr. Muldoon?
Yes, Mayor, just want to lodge a no vote on item number 10.
Okay. Mayor Protam, Avery?
I have none.
All right, and I have none as well.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of the consent calendar items, 1 through 18, with amendments to items 1 and 3 with a continuance of item 11, with a clarification by Councilmember Dixon on the directions to the Harbor Commission, item number 7, and item number 3 pulled by Ms. Brenner. Further with recusals and other, other items, no vote on item 10 by Mr. Muldoon. Recusal by Mr. O'Neill on item 3, and recusal, Mr. Duffield, on item 7.
Okay. Okay. We'll go out to public comment on non-agenda item, I'm sorry, hang on just a moment.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Sorry about that, Mayor.
That's okay.
I guess I recused myself on this item before. I don't know why, so I'll just lodge a same. It's item number 12, recuse on item 12. Sorry about that.
Okay. So incorporated into your motion, Mr. Avery?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry, I missed who seconded. Who seconded that one?
Okay, do we have, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. You need to say the reason.
Yeah, so you're, you're home within 500 feet of it.
Okay, all right.
Forgot where I lived. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Brenner, second. So we're going to go out to public comment on the consent calendar. If you're going to speak to item number 3, that's been polled. Do I have any public comment on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any public, any comment? Nope, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I have to read a lot of ordinance titles. Ordinance number 2020-2, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending Chapter 14.12 of Title 14 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code relating to water service discontinuation for non-payment. Ordinance number 2020-3, an ordinance of a City Council of City of Newport Beach amending Section 1.12.020 subsection J and adding Chapter 1.28 to Title 1 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to increase transparency in government operations and establish lobbyist registration, reporting, and disclosure requirements. Ordinance 2020-4, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach adopting Code Amendment Number CA 2019-006 to amend Title 15 entitled Building and Construction and Title 20 entitled Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to cottage preservation. And ordinance number 2020-5, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending Title 17 and other related provisions of the Newport Beach Municipal Code making comprehensive revisions, including but not limited to updating definitions regulating marine sanitation devices to protect against discharge of waste in Newport Harbor, amending requirements for mooring sub-permits, adding procedure to allow mooring length extensions, and modifying and/or adding procedures for issuance of permits, appeals, calls for review, and revocation. The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
All right, thank you. We'll bring it to item number 3, and I will lodge a recusal due to real property interests, so this portion of the meeting will be run by Mayor Protam Avery. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brenner?
I requested that this come back to us because wildfires are such a significant thing in California these days, and I, it appears to me that in the past, we've had ordinances, but when people living on Buck Gully have objected, there hasn't been any real teeth in our, in our requirements. And so Jeff and Kevin have worked really hard on getting out into the community and talking about this issue, and they're bringing back some recommendations to us that I'd like for them to explain.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members. I brought with me, or Jeff Boils, Fire Chief. I brought with me Fire Marshal Kevin Bass that will explain a little bit more, and we'll just go from there.
So in regards to the enforcement piece, we already have existing policies and procedures for the enforcement. Essentially, when we go out, we do an inspection, and they fail, we issue a notice, and then we do a re-inspection. That first re-inspection, we hope they complete the work that's outlined, but if they don't, there is a fee. It's already listed in the city fee schedule of 220, I'm sorry, $212 per hour. And we have a process if they refuse to comply after three times through Chapter 10 in the municipal code for abatement, and then we go through that process to essentially do the work and charge the homeowner. So we do have a process to the end.
This is the new, the new regulations?
Actually, actually, the, the new regulations will be increasing the amount of material that will be removed, required by the homeowners to remove on their properties, so we can create a bigger prescriptive buffer between the homes and the vegetation, reduce the fuel load, but the, the provisions for enforcement are already in our codes. It's, it's my job to make sure that they're, they're enforced and to follow through on them.
What about the complaints from our citizens that we have not been doing this in the past and that people have been getting by without mitigating the fire hazard?
It is my understanding that the program that started in 2012 was on an alternating year basis, even years in Buck Gully and odd years in Morning Canyon. So we weren't out there every year. And because of that, you get a large amount of vegetation that will grow over a two-year period of time. In addition to that, I also asked staff to do a quick review of enforcement actions on properties, and there was, in fact, enforcement actions taken, up to and including abatement, where the city crews went and did the work and we charged the homeowner. So it may not have happened in some of the areas where neighbors believe action should have taken place, but it has happened in the areas under the vegetation rules.
So can you give us a timeline about how long it will take for the city to get to the point that they actually do the work if the neighbor will not agree?
So when we do our first inspection, we typically start in June after the rainy season. We give them 30 days to do the work. Now, we've encouraged them to do the work prior to us coming out, but once we come in June, if they're not compliant, we give them 30 days. When we come back on our re-inspection, if they haven't complied, it'll be another two weeks, then another two weeks, and at that point, we start setting up our package so that we can start the abatement process. So at the end of 90 days, they haven't done the work, we should be getting the crews out there to do the work. So I'm thinking that'll be September, October time period when we're, crews are out there on those final parcels.
And Jeff, could you talk about how far this goes compared to the state requirements?
Sure. So when we did our public outreach, we gave options, and one of the options was to essentially give the state requirement of where the state stops. The overwhelming feedback that we received was to go a little bit further than that, so our, our requirements will exceed what the state requires, and Kevin can go into detail if you'd like him to. However, having said that, we stopped short of compromising the integrity of the hillsides, and that's where we felt the erosion factor was our stopping point so that we didn't put the homes in danger when the rains do come from mudslides and hillsides.
Okay. Last question from me would be, Kevin, about the insurance cancellations that we're seeing some people talking about in Newport Coast, can you talk about that and whether this can help as far as people getting their fire insurance renewed?
So I did talk to the Office of the California Department of Insurance, and one of the problems they're running into is the same as our residents, is cancellation of policies. The insurance company runs as a, as a for-profit business, so they set their own standard. They cannot be held to the state requirements or the city requirements. An example, we maintain our city in good, in good standing, and they'll still be canceled. We have homes that have 170 feet or more of defensible space through our fill modification program, primarily in the Newport Coast area, and they're still being canceled. In the city of Los Angeles, they have 200 feet of brush clearance, and they're still suffering cancelization, cancellation. So the, the problem is statewide, and it's, it's, it's on the insurance commissioner's mind. He's looking at all his options for getting some, some cooperative ventures from businesses. But what it comes down to is, is for business, they have to make a profit and they have to limit their exposure, so they look at what is a win and what is a loss, and we just don't have that moxie to go after them and make them be a little more cooperative.
Those are, those are all my questions. Those are all my questions.
Great. Any questions from up here?
Yes, I do. Kevin, you can just answer yes or no on these, but if you want to elaborate, you certainly can. Would you say that there is now a plan, a concrete plan in place to deal with compliance issues when it comes to mitigating the fire danger in Buck Gully and Shore Cliffs?
Yes.
Okay. Would you say that there is language that clearly defines now what residents need to do in these areas?
With the adoption of the ordinance, yes.
Okay. And, and based on what you said, I understood that there will be an annual inspection now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the issue of fines, are the fines used, are the fines used to cover the cost of the work that the city has to do if the property owner is non-compliant?
The abatement process will recover the city cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments from council? Take it out to the public. Any public input on this? Take it out to the public, any public input on this?
Mayor Protam Avery and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As you know, I suggested some corrections to this, and I'm glad that they were incorporated. I have a remaining question, though, for any citizens who are trying to read what you're actually adopting tonight in the revised version that we have here, it was handed out. It still directs some terms that are defined, which may be important to people, terms like defensible space, fuel modification plan, and so forth. And what you're adopting says the terms are defined in chapter two. I hope we can get some clarification of what that's chapter two of. It does not seem to be chapter two of the municipal code. I'm not sure it's chapter two of the fire code. People may really be concerned about what the definitions are. And then the second point, as kind of had mentioned, but perhaps was not clear from the discussion, that there were public input sessions, as the staff report says, where different options for how fuel could be modified were considered, and the city is adopting something, but those are not actually in the ordinance, they're in the guidelines and standards. There's a copy of one of them in the lobby. So the question is, is it just the ordinance that's being changed? Are the guidelines and standards being changed? If they are being changed, what is the process for that? How does the public know? And what is the public's opportunity for their input to these? Is the council going to be approving new guidelines and standards? Does the department do it internally? How does that happen? It's not clear from any of the material that I have seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, do you have any?
In regards to the definitions, the definitions were actually adopted in November as part of the fire code amendment. It's actually shown as in the Newport Beach Municipal Code. I believe the number is nine point oh four point oh five oh, but it does have the definitions in the city ordinance. Sorry, the city municipal code, they're there, but they're referenced as chapter two because the ordinance also adopted all of the fire code with the extra stuff. So it is in the municipal code. I can help Mr. Mosher offline on that.
Great.
In regards to the adoption of the ordinance, I'm sorry, the guideline, the guideline is in the body of the ordinance, so essentially, the staff report presentation will show the the guideline that is adopted in inclusive of the ordinance.
Thank you.
I wanted to make a comment about the inspection and ignition problems in the region where there's the volatile material. These inspections should probably be done with a little care and some better diagnostic equipment. I'm not sure if, well, I am sure that the best mechanism is like an infrared CCD or some sort of charge couple device that can measure the heat that's being generated from the material. So these inspections of the of the region need to, you know, make sure ignition conditions are just right, or well, the opposite of just right. Okay. And that inspection might be best, I mean, in some schemes, thirty days or sixty days. An annual inspection might be might be tough. I don't know what, I mean, I know the recommendation is thirty days inspection, but I thought one year is too too little. So continuous monitoring should probably be good, but that's impossible to do. So I just recommend something in between, maybe a hundred, a hundred day inspection. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on.
I'd like to move adoption of the ordinance.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, this is the amended ordinance that was put out this afternoon.
Right. Can all those please vote? Yeah, we did.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number twenty twenty dash six, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending section nine point zero four point three eight zero, replacement to chapter forty-nine requirements for wild and urban interface fire areas of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to adopt local amendments to the two thousand nineteen edition of the California Fire Code, except for the Title twenty-four, Part nine of the California Code of Regulations, with Mayor O'Neill recusing himself. The motion carries six zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move into public comments on non-agenda items. If you have any public comments on non-agenda items, please come forward.
I brought this up at the Water Quality Committee meeting, and Councilman Hurdman suggested I bring it here. We have been a leader in water quality, and a lot of that is because of the Water Quality Committee. And yet we have so many other environmental problems, both physical and just imposed upon us legislatively, and we have no committee helping you with that. So I would like to suggest that the council either resuscitate the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee with a new list of responsibilities, or expand the portfolio of the existing Water Quality Committee to include these things, such as dealing with energy and waste management and traffic and that sort of thing. I think it would be very helpful to you, and it would be another opportunity for residents to serve. To get the ball rolling, in case you are interested, I did a very rough draft of some possible language, which I'll give to the clerk.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
So I don't even know where to start, but five years ago was the first time I ever came and spoke publicly here, and I said, let's do something about the heroin in our town, and most of you looked at me like I was from outer space, but I'm going to bring it up again. I think we have a huge addiction problem in Orange County. I think we have an out-of-control sober living rogue operators in our county, and I think it's adding to the homeless situation in our county. And I am begging, especially fellow Republicans in our county, when you go to vote, do not just check a Republican box. Look at who, look at who has endorsed the person, look at who's behind the person. For instance, our supervisor, Michelle Steele, look who, look who contributes to her, the South Korean airlines, all the airlines that want the airport expanded. So I'm up here tonight because I am asking people to please consider voting for Katrina Paul.
No, 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 no.
So it's not appropriate to use this as a forum for for
There's not a campaign forum.
Advocating for elections.
Okay, then let's skip the campaign and go back to this. I would like to know why the city of Newport Beach, when I have learned from Costa Mesa, when Jim Rekheimer had a task force on sober living that took a year and they did nothing while the the industry bloomed, I consider task force to almost be called a stall force. And your task force here on the homeless situation, exactly what did you accomplish? And by the way, I know some people on the task force. I've spoken to them frequently. I'm very concerned about this, and you have done absolutely nothing. And tonight on the way here, I drove by the the bus station, and there's some people up there, and it's so sad, it's winter time, it's cold, they're out there in wheelchairs. I would really like to know what the city of Newport Beach plans to do about this, because so far I see no action, I see inaction, and I think it's bad governance. Thank you.
As always, a pleasure. Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. just a brief note, that's not correct in any regard, that there's no action. It's an absurd statement to make in a in a city like this. Anyone who would like to see what has been going on or speak to someone, our homeless liaison officer is right here, Tony Yim. We have been seeing a marked reduction in the number of people sleeping on our streets. We have had a conversation at Speak Up Newport recently that is on our city website led by our homeless coordinator, homelessness coordinator, services coordinator, excuse me, that lays out quite a bit, spends about an hour on this topic, so I just, I have to refute that because I can't let that one sit out there like that. All right. Next, we'll go into the public hearing, item number nineteen. Does anyone, would anyone like a staff, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, recusal due to real property interest? No problem. All right. Would anyone like a staff report on this? I think it was pretty well briefed.
No need to beat the bush on this one.
Oh, man. All right. All right. Any, any, that was pretty funny. All right, any comment up here? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay. All right. No? Yes? Okay, none. So we'll come back. Do I have a motion?
Remove the item.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, or I'm sorry, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read another ordinance title, ordinance twenty twenty dash seven, there we go, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending Title twenty entitled Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to hedge heights and front setbacks abutting stratas within Lidl Isle, with Councilmember Dixon recusing herself. The motion carries six zero.
Okay. Last item on the agenda, item number twenty. This one will have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm Simone Georgis. I'm your Community Development Director. With me, I have Monique Nevert, who's our permit supervisor, and Brian Cantino, who's with our Code Enforcement Division. We're really excited to to present this item before you. This is an update to our short-term lodging ordinance. We spent, there was an ad hoc committee that was formed and spent a good year working on this ordinance, and so we're pretty excited about sharing some of the results here with all of you. So why are we here? You know, about a year ago, the council heard a study session and is really talking about an update to short-term lodging, and the council has had a lot of complaints from the past, and so has city staff. And so what are those kind of major complaints that we received over the last few years? Well, a lot of it is focusing on the occupancy of the short-term rental units. We get a lot of noise complaints. We have trash complaints with overflowing trash because you have large groups of people in these units. We get a lot of complaints that from the lack of parking. Sometimes you have a large group of people coming to stay at a unit or multiple units, and they take up a lot of parking. Just from an enforcement standpoint, you can see on the screen there, we have about, just last year alone, we've issued, Code Enforcement has issued thirty-five citations, and in two thousand eighteen, we've issued about fifty citations. From an enforcement standpoint, we've been doing a really good job of looking, going through the websites, all the platforms, and trying to find illegal operators. And if I could just point out, just on this table here, just look at the very bottom where it says total. So since we've started in about two thousand fifteen, we have found about six hundred illegal units operating in the city of Newport Beach. So these are illegal short-term rental units that have not paid a business license or a lodging permit or their TOT, and we've gone through the enforcement process and legalized them. And so we've collected at the total there on the right-hand side, about two and a half million dollars just from illegal operations. So this is a part of our enforcement program that is constantly ongoing. It is, we think it's getting better over time because people are getting much more educated about short-term rentals in Newport Beach. A little history about short-term lodging in Newport. You know, we've, we've had a culture and a history of allowing short-term rentals. In the past, it's always been maybe on a weekly basis, you know, from the summer season, and it's, again, it's always been our history, part of our history. We first adopted an ordinance on short-term lodging back in nineteen ninety-two, where the the council at the time decided that it was appropriate to actually start issuing permits and tracking short-term lodging. We didn't update that ordinance until two thousand four, so it's been definitely several years later, about twelve years later. And at that time, they've, the council at the time decided that the short-term lodging should be only in the multifamily zone, R two or greater, and really to protect those residential neighborhoods. In that R one zone, which is the residential neighborhoods, we do grandfather two hundred and twelve short-term lodging permits because they've always had a short-term lodging permit, and at the time when the council adopted that ordinance, it was decided that they can just continue with those short-term lodging permits. So we haven't touched the ordinance since two thousand four. Last year, the council decided to form an ad hoc committee, and it was made up of council members Diane Dixon, council member Joy Brenner, and council member Jeff Hurdman. They have spent a lot of time, an enormous amount of time on this subject matter, meeting with the community, meeting with staff. We've, we've done this over and over with our meetings, and I think they're probably tired of meeting with me. What was the purpose of the ad hoc committee? It was really to develop these recommendations that balance the quality of life of the residents and balancing the needs of the property owners and those short-term rental property owners. And again, we're not proposing tonight of outlawing short-term rental at all. That's not the goal here at all. It's just fine, it's just improving the quality of life for the residents, and that was the ultimate goal of the ad hoc committee. It's really important to note that short-term lodging, if thirty days or less, is not considered a property right, and and we really want to stress that with the community, with the public. If you're at thirty-one days, you're entering to a lease agreement, a long-term lease, anything less than that, we don't recognize as short-term lodging. It's not as a property right. It is, it is not considered a proper right. It's very similar to hotels. Just a little background on what we've accomplished in the last year, as far as our public outreach, you know, the council, the ad hoc committee members, they've held three separate town halls meetings in District Five, District Six, and in District One, and we've actually had two council study sessions to gain everybody's input, and we've also had a community meeting back in August to gain the community's input. So we've had a lot of opportunity to gain the the input of the constituent base. This is really an important table, and so what we've done is we went out and kind of surveyed some of the the cities that are closest to us in size, and these are actual cities that have short-term lodging, and and how many permits that each of these cities actually allow or have active. So you can see there, you know, Irvine has a little bit, about eleven, and then you kind of work your way down the list, and then you have, second to last is Carlsbad. Carlsbad's population is about a hundred and fifteen thousand, yet they allow six hundred, they have six hundred and ninety active permits. Santa Monica's population is ninety-two thousand, yet they allow three hundred and forty active permits. Newport Beach, we have, our population's eighty-five, eighty-six thousand, and we allow four, we have about fourteen hundred and sixty-five active short-term lodging permits. We're far above any other city as far as having the amount of short-term lodging activity. We're not changing that fourteen sixty-five at all. That that continues. We're not changing it at all. So but I wanted, I wanted the council to see, I want the public to see that, you know, we have a very robust short-term lodging business here in Newport. We generate about four million dollars in TOT revenue just from short-term lodging. What we're proposing is just some changes to improve the quality of life for the residents. So what are those changes? So I'm going to go quickly go down the list. One is that, you know, any type of advertisement that property owner undertakes or posts on a website or print literature, just post the, include the short-term lodging permit number. That way, everybody knows that it's a legal unit and staff can track it. We are going to propose a maximum occupancy per unit, and this is, again, this is a semi-standard of the industry, two people per bedroom plus two people. So for example, a three-bedroom home, so that's three bedrooms times two, a six plus two, that's eight people. That's the maximum occupancy. This is overnight. This is not visitors, this is not a dinner party that you have, this is just overnight guests. Some level of restriction on occupancy, that's what we're trying to impose here. We do want to make sure that there's some interior rules that are posted for the guests, right? Ones, what's the trash schedule? What's the street sweeping schedule? Need to have a contact number of an individual that if the guest needs to reach out to the property manager or to the property owner, you know, post that phone number. And we also want to impose a parking restriction for the short-term rentals. We just want to see at least one parking space, either driveway, garage, carport, sideyard, someplace you could park a vehicle on the property, one, one vehicle, one parking space for one unit. And we've had some residents say, or some property owners say, well, I don't have a parking space, and the answer is that our proposal is that you don't get a short-term lodging permit. And again, this is really just to help alleviate some of those parking complaints that we've been receiving. We do, we are proposing an exterior sign about a two, it's a maximum two-foot square sign, and it's going to have the contact name, the the maximum occupancy of the unit, and a twenty-four-hour contact number. And that phone number is going to be really important. That phone number is an answering service that the city will contract with. We will contract out an answering service at twenty-four hour. So the resident, if a resident or a neighbor has an issue with that unit because of over occupancy, or it's too loud, they can call that answering service number, that answering service will forward to the property owner the complaint. And the idea of doing this is that, you know, we So if a resident or a neighbor has an issue with that unit because of over occupancy or it's too loud, they can call that answering service number. That answering service will forward to the property owner the complaint. And the idea of doing this is that, you know, we get complaints that either, you know, I called the police and the police, you know, didn't respond in an immediate fashion, or, you know, city doesn't have any code enforcement at night. We understand those complaints. So this is a very efficient way to address enforcement without adding additional staffing to the enforcement body here. So again, it is an answering service, 24-hour answering service, that the city will contract with, and that answering service will forward the complaints to the property owners. Number six, we are proposing a cap of 1,600 permits in the City of Newport Beach. Right now, active permits is 1,465. We're saying, let's just cap it at 1,600. So in a sense, we're actually allowing room for growth in the short-term lodging. Right now, there's a potential of almost 10,000 units in Newport. We just want to say, there's a limit to all this, right? We're just going to say it's above what we're at now. And we will develop a waiting list. And that way, if people, you know, if we get to 1,601, our finance staff will track those people that are waiting to get on and get a short-term lodging permit. We do have units outside the coastal zone. So we have about 58 that are permitted outside the coastal zone. What we're requesting is that we don't issue any more outside the coastal zone, and for that 58, we just give them 10 years, and they can, they'll phase out out of the short-term lodging. So in 10 years, they're no longer eligible to get a short-term lodging permit. Number eight, with our agents and hosting companies or platforms, you know, now they have some responsibility. So a platform is going to have to monitor what are legally permitted units, and they cannot, if the unit is not a legal permit, and we will track those, they can't finish, they cannot complete the booking. They could post it, but they cannot complete the booking. And we're going to track, we're going to have a registry, and we're going to work with the platform so they will have our data, and they're going to be, it's a sharing of information between the platforms and the city. And so this is a responsibility of the hosting platforms. In addition, what we want to see is that if an agent or hosting platform or a property owner collects the TOT tax, that individual remits the TOT tax. So if you want to have the platforms do all the, collect all the fees and all the payments, the platforms now are going to be responsible just to cut the city a check for all the TOT. And that's something that is supported by case law. From an enforcement standpoint, we're proposing that if there's a short-term lodging permit that's been issued and there has been no reporting of TOT for two years, that we're going to go ahead and close out that short-term lodging permit because we have a cap of 1,600. We want to cycle through them. If you're not using a short-term lodging permit, then let's go ahead and close you out. Let's go to the individual that's on the waiting list, if there is an individual on the waiting list. Property owners always can apply for a short-term lodging permit. We're not preventing short-term lodging, we're not getting rid of short-term lodging, but we want to cycle through these permits if you're not going to use them. We've toughened up the enforcement. If you get two violations from code enforcement, you get a six-month suspension on your short-term lodging permit. So it used to be four, now we've pushed it down to two. And same thing, if you get two LUGOs, which is something, it's a citation from the Police Department for loud and unruly gatherings in a 24-month period, you can get either suspended or your short-term lodging permit can get revoked also. So there is due process rights, you know, you have an appeal process, there is due process in all of this. But we just want to toughen up the enforcement a little bit more. So I want to close out with staffing and resources. What are we looking for? So from an implement, if the council were to adopt the current ordinance, there is going to be some resources needed on the front end to issue these permits. We also anticipate there's going to be some reactive enforcement. We're going to get a little bit more complaints from the code enforcement standpoint. So we're going to work with Grace, the city manager, and propose some ideas, and she'll submit that through the budget process. We do have a question for the council. If this is, the council is ready to adopt this type of ordinance, you know, what kind of proactive enforcement does the council want to see? You know, we're going to require and make sure, you know, everything's be based on an occupant load, so there's a number of bedrooms. So do we want to go out there and verify the bedroom count? Do we want to go out there, verify the parking space? Do we want to verify the signage? So that's the proactive enforcement, and that's a question for council. From a financial standpoint, the answering service is going to cost about another $35,000 per year, and the website monitoring, which we currently pay for now through host compliance, is costing us about $75,000. Again, all this, we'll work with Grace Leong, our city manager, and submit through the budget process. We can take all these costs that we've talked about, any increase in staffing resources or increase in fees, and we can offset with short-term lodging. And since we can do a fee study on the short-term lodging permit, come back to city council and make it so there's no money coming out of the general fund to cover this. It'll be covered by short-term lodging permits.
Hang on, just a moment. Is this your last slide?
I do think it is. Yes, it is?
Okay, let's go back. All right, Ms. Dixon. No, it's, no, for you.
Thank you, staff. As Mr. Georgis just stated, we've been working on this for about a year, Councilmember Hurdman and Ms. Brenner, Councilmember Brenner and myself, and have heard from property management companies, from residents, and from staff. And we've had town halls in each of the primarily affected areas of the city. District 1, obviously my district, you didn't show a slide how many existing STLs. Do you have that map that used to show how many are in our respective?
No, we did not include that.
Anyway.
It's about 500 to 600 in District 1.
Yeah. And then Corona del Mar, and then Bebo Island have the lion's share of short-term rentals. And we want to be supportive of our property management companies. I've said this publicly several times, that in the history of the city, as Mr. Georgis stated, we have been very advanced as a community to allow and welcome short-term rentals in our city. It has only been since the inception of the online platforms that there became burdensome to many of our neighborhoods, and that's what we are addressing. Do you happen to have the number of short-term rentals permits that we had in the year 2015 and what we have today? Do you know that? No? Well, anyways, it's grown significantly. So we, as a city and as a city council and as a city staff and from an enforcement standpoint, the city manages pretty well, very well, working cooperatively with our property management companies who do the frontline review or application process on their patrons. It was usually done in person, it wasn't online. And so there was a lot of hands-on management of who was renting the properties. Well, now it's obviously been depersonalized, and the property management companies are still, are working with the online companies, and they're imposing their own set of qualifications during their application process. I'm very confident that our property management companies continue to do a fine job, but that's not really what this is all directed at, is the areas where there are individuals legally or illegally, legally or illegally, renting their homes for a period of time, in most, many cases, for just one night. That's becoming, we didn't address this in these recommendations, but I'll speak to that later, that one night is creating this impact on our neighborhoods where groups of party people come and they enjoy the home, and then they're gone. And so from an enforcement standpoint, it becomes very difficult. So I'm very pleased with the recommendations that have been presented. I think we've tried to balance the needs of the property management companies. I know, I don't know if we could please all the people 100% of the time, but we're trying to be fair to our residents, to our property owners, and to our property management companies. I'll say more later, but I do want to address, you mentioned about proactive enforcement. I think one way we can, even though these, our permit fees cover more than 100% of the cost of administering and managing the enforcement, we may find it burdensome, frankly, for staff to go out and physically survey each property that is being presented for a permit application, and maybe we do some sort of random inspection. What has come to our attention by some of the residents, and maybe they'll be speaking tonight, I don't know. One resident in particular has done a comparison of rental properties on Newport Island versus the listing of the homes when they were on the real estate market, and it's shown that when they were being listed for sale on the real estate market, they had perhaps two or three bedrooms, but as a short-term rental, they're renting as a four- or five-bedroom facility or home, and it's never been reconstructed. And so photographs have shown that a walk-in, a large walk-in closet, for example, has been converted into a bedroom. A dining room, which used to have a main dining room table, the table no longer exists, and that has now been, that space has now been converted into a bedroom. So what we are finding, there are great, there are good players, there are excellent players, our long-term companies in the community that have been dealing with short-term rentals, they do a fabulous job. There, just as we talked earlier this evening about the boardwalk and a few bad apples, there are a few, or more than a few, bad apples in the rental business that are encouraging this revolving door of overnight stays that are creating havoc in our neighborhoods and trash and public trash collection, public safety, incident reports. Our residents are so frustrated dealing, having to call code enforcement or calling the police, and by the time the police get there to the residents, or the police say, "Calm down, don't make noise," and then they leave, and then the noise comes on. It's a constant problem in our highly dense neighborhoods where we have cheek-by-jowl, we have rentals and residences trying to coexist, and it's becoming difficult. So I will look forward to hearing the public conversation this evening and from my colleagues as the reaction to this. We really tried to be fair, and it's, maybe it's not perfect, but we're trying to listen to our residents and listen to our business owners. And I'm going to speak afterwards with some other potential amendments to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. To the subcommittee and staff, you were very thorough. Thank you for bringing this forward. Obviously, Simone, you know how I feel about proactive enforcement versus waiting to hear a complaint. It looks like we're going to capture the $110,000 that we would see with capturing the city's portion of any TOT at the point of transaction, if there is a point of transaction where they capture that. In what scenarios do they not collect the fee at the point of transaction upfront? It says here, if an agent or hosting platform collects a fee for the booking of the transaction, they should also collect the transaction occupancy tax. So in which scenario do they not collect?
It'd be in a circumstance where they're not using an agent or hosting platform.
So the traditional method of essentially coming into a shop and, or one of the storefronts and writing a check after the fact, or?
Or if they dealt directly with the owner, they weren't using an agent or hosting platform at all. So if they're using an agent or hosting platform, at the time they make the transaction, they also have to collect the TOT.
Do you know?
And the service fee.
Thank you. It's a great answer. Could you guess what percentage of those individuals are using the platform where it will be collected upfront?
I would say it's pretty high, or probably above 60% that are using platforms.
That makes sense. And how do we audit those who are not on a platform? Do they collect the?
We conduct random audits through consultants.
And for the most part, we find they're compliant, I'm sure.
We are in the middle of audits right now. All the findings haven't been provided yet, but we are showing that the properties are compliant.
About what? About what percentage of those?
Because all of the audits haven't been completed, I wouldn't really be able to give a percentage on what's been accurate in compliance. We're waiting for all of the audits to be completed before we can make the determination of who's meeting the requirements of the TOT.
Okay. Well, I'd like to say I'm very happy to see this, what I thought was one of the most important component of this is that if there's a platform, that platform collects it, they collect it upfront, because that is the way in which it could be circumvented through Airbnb and the other large providers. There are two things I'm not very supportive of. One I have mixed feelings on, and they're all good recommendations, but one is essentially advertising, or should I say not advertising? Let me find it here. Exterior signage. So I have a couple of concerns related to signage, ranging from aesthetics to public safety, knowing that someone is not a permanent resident here, or having essentially a neighbor have to see when their guests come over that, oh, the house over is an Airbnb. What would that signage look like? Do we have an idea of how large it would be?
So I put just a sampling up on the screen there on the right, on the screen.
Oh, that's, I didn't see this. Is that right there? 1, 2, 3 beach. Okay, great.
Two square feet maximum.
Two square feet?
Correct. So as small as we can get it, but big enough so at least you can see some of the lettering on it.
Yeah. So I wouldn't support that. And I also wouldn't support restriction on parking that would essentially not take away perhaps a legal property right, but a perceived property right. It would affect the valuation of the home or a detrimental reliance was when the home was purchased, thinking they would have the ability to use it for this purpose. So those are my two items that would not allow me to vote for this, but I support most of this in spirit. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hurdman.
So Kevin, the parking requirement, is that what you just said you would not support? I just needed?
Yes, because it says that some individuals will no longer be able to operate a?
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of quick things, Simone. This is as a result of an email I received from a property company today that's in the short-term rental business in our city. Okay? Have we defined exactly what's being taxed? Is it just the, is it the overnight rate, or is it any, does it also, does a tax involve fees, like cleaning deposit or that type of thing? What are we actually taxing? Is it defined somewhere?
So the definition of rent is in our municipal code right now at 3.16, and there are taxable items and non-taxable items. So some of the taxable items, you know, you would have would be late checkout fee, not just the gross rents collected, there are other things that are considered rent under our definition.
Maybe we should reference that then in this. Like, in parentheses, refer to whatever you just cited.
Okay.
Okay? So that that's clear. And then I think we have been very clear on who is to remit the TOT. Whoever collects the TOT remits the TOT. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. There's just, there's no gray area there.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments up here? Okay. We'll go out to members of the public.
I'm Nancy Gardner. I live in Corona del Mar, and I never expected to have a short-term lodging next to me, but I do, and it's like the little girl who had a little curl right in the middle of her forehead. Sometimes they're very good, and sometimes they are horrid. And when they're horrid, I think the thing that bugs me most is that I'm thinking that there's somebody there that's making a whole lot of money while I'm paying the price because they don't live anywhere near their particular unit. So I really do encourage this, what you're passing, because it gives some teeth to the enforcement so that when they are bad apples, we can get rid of them, but when they are good, then the other people, I mean, it's great. You see them come down, the families, they're enjoying it, they're using our beaches, they're using our restaurants, and then when you have the fraternity come, that's like a commercial use, and it is just very difficult. And this will help us deal with that sort of issue and keep it more residential in nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
As far as homelessness is concerned, there are places like San Onofre and land in Majeska Canyon, which could be developed.
So this is the short-term lodging?
Yeah, well.
If you have comments on that.
Sure, yeah. I mean, the Army Corps of Engineers can build housing in the order of magnitude timeframe, like a month. And if I, you know, create a hypothesis, it would be that communication with these elements would create something that would benefit all parties. And there are reasons why they're homeless people, they're victims of financial institutions like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, toxic, gilded age, narcissistic, self-reforming society that doesn't.
So what we're talking about is short-term lodging, which is?
Short-term lodging.
When people are sleeping in homes that they don't own for less than 30 days. So do you have any comments specific to that issue?
Well, you know, time is relative. 30 days for someone is a lifetime. They can change drastically in that month. So, I mean, these are people who need caseworkers. It's not just to put four walls and a roof over their head, it's a significant problem with our system, our rights and privileges system. We need to change it to the story of people, and that requires more investment in health care, which is something that this, you know, government doesn't do due to a significant problem with pork barrels. It's a federal problem, but these problems show a lack of respect for people who certainly earned it.
So, sorry, I'm going to have to catch you off there. We're only talking about short-term lodging at this point, not the homeless issues.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. My name is Larry Robinson. I'm a resident homeowner on Newport Island. I've never come before the council before. Only time I've ever been to city halls is to get my parking permit, but this is a, it means a lot to me when I heard that this was going on tonight. I appreciate your due diligence and the homework that's been done to address this. All I can say is it's changing the whole culture of our, of our island. When I purchased my home there six years ago, the real estate agent said, the best thing about here is you can't, no short-term rentals, you have to rent for a month or more. And I didn't do my homework, I don't know if that was true or not, but that was my understanding, is that you had to rent at least, you know, like a long-term lease, like you're there a year or something, not these, you know, routines. So all the issues that you brought up, from parking to loud noise to, I didn't see public drunkenness, urinating in the gutter, you know, called the police multiple times, they've got other things to do. But it has truly changed, not to mention the guys flying down the street, there's, this is a neighborhood island, it's a little bedroom community, mostly families are there, kids are riding their bikes down the street, guys come hauling, you already know who's not, doesn't belong there because they're not respectful of the neighbors. And so it really has changed, in my opinion, the culture of the island. And I appreciate the steps that you're taking, but I think there's not nearly enough. So I don't know if the city looks at, is there certain areas that, okay, this is really a good place to have these short-term rentals, like a nightly thing? Maybe some areas of Newport Beach, it's not a good place to have it? I don't know if that's, if this is one-stop shopping for the whole entire city or what, but I would just really have you think twice. I realize, I didn't realize, there's so much money being made here with taxes and the property managers and the homeowners. I really, I don't know all the politics that are going on, but obviously there's a lot of money behind all this discussion. But for us to just simply want to have a nice house and a nice community and a nice neighbors, it's completely changed things. So I would just want to raise my voice to say, you know, I wish we could, I didn't even know this was allowed when, until like two years ago, who are all these people here that I've never seen before? The garage opens across the street, there were three mattresses in the garage with people laying in there. The pizza cartons and the beer bottles were all over, they're there to have a party, that's why they rent it, they come down to Newport and stay out late, come home at 2:00 in the morning. And so it just changes everything for us on that island. So maybe it's good over, you know, somewhere else, but it affects us, and I really wish you'd really think long and hard about the decisions you're going to make on this. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Craig Williams. I live on Pearl Avenue. Actually, if I was the kind of host that he was just describing, I hope you'd throw me away. It's just like, I'm a very involved host, I'm very passionate, so I'm going to tend to read from this, because I bought this property in April of 2017, it's two-bedroom, 1937 beach cottage, and I didn't want it torn down, I knew the woman that had owned it, her family. And I host, I manage it, I get to know the guests, they, pretty much Airbnb, they come through. And I limited it to four people in two bedrooms. I actually would say if you could, I'd, you probably would get everybody fighting against you, but I think two people per bedroom would be occupancy. If you were to crack down on occupancy, there's a lot of, well, let's say, short-term lodgings on our street, Pearl Avenue, and our, my neighbors don't like those, they love me. We've had, my guests have invited neighbors over, and we've celebrated 60-year anniversaries, we've celebrated graduations with my guests, they've become part of the street. So if my neighbors were here, they'd say yes. If everybody could be like Craig doing it, we wouldn't have a problem. I think the parking is the big issue for me, because I don't really have it, and I'm not sure. And I think parking on Balboa Island specifically is an issue that needs to be addressed. We have residents on Pearl Avenue that have three or five cars, guess where they're parked? Not any of them in their garage. So there's issues like that. I think long-term rental units with high occupancies, you know, you've got, if I wasn't to do hosting in my Airbnb, I would put four people in the house, that's four cars. So right there, you've got four cars on the street, and I don't have to give them a spot because they're long-term. So I think there's a lot of other things. I think if you could really nail this occupancy thing, just neighbors across the street from me, they get, you know, 10 people in the house. Well, there was an advertisement on VRBO not to pick it on a site, first week in August, and they compared it to mine, said, oh, you lost this booking because you're more expensive. I went to the site and that, I don't know how they did it. Anyway, it's 800 square feet, two bedrooms, one and a half bath, seven people. I just think that's absurd. I mean, I put four people max in my house, and, you know, it works really well. The signage, I am, I'm very private, I don't want people to know it's an Airbnb. My, the two places across the street have these big signs on it, and it just makes the island look cheap. So I, you know, I wouldn't mind a decal on the window, I think something smaller like that, I'd be okay with that. But all my neighbors know how to get hold of me. So anyway, I am, you know, very passionate about it, and I, as I said, I wish all the hosts were involved like myself. I do, I don't want to, you know, point out any management companies, but they don't vet their guests, they don't get to know their guests. I can tell you the names, the children's names of my guests, and probably half of my guests coming in 2020 are all returning. So, you know, Balboa Island's a nostalgic place. I started at age three, my grandmother brought me down here, and it, you know, it's a, you know, anyway, it is. And thank you for your time, and, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Connie Adenoff. Good evening. I'm one of the owners of Beachview Realty, and we do vacation rental management on the, basically the Newport Peninsula, some on Balboa Island as well. Our focus is to bring families to town, and one little zinger I need to add is, please, if you are interested in us bringing families here and attracting families here, please don't issue another liquor license in any of the peer areas, because that just attracts, the clash of cultures is really, really problematic. And, and it's, most of our vacationers don't come here to party and, and go to our bars that, I see that as a resident of the peninsula myself for, ooh, almost 62 years. That tends to be the long-term rentals, not as much short-term. And again, we focus on families, bringing them here. We do also know all their names. We vet them many ways, but then we require them to come face-to-face to our office and they, and this isn't a commercial, I'm sorry, but we're passionate about this too, as to who comes to our town, because it's our town too. But we make them come to our office, even if it's a keyless entry, to see, are you the one that made the booking? And to be sure that mommy didn't book it to send her high school seniors down here to party. So try to do the best that we possibly can to bring only good people here to our town. The previous gentleman stole my thunder on the parking situation. If we have a duplex that has a three-bedroom downstairs and a four-bedroom upstairs, there's going to be two cars on that property in the garage. If that place were to be a long-term rental, there would be seven cars. Plus then the boyfriends and girlfriends would move in, that would be 14 cars. So I don't see the parking being as problematic for the short-term rentals as I see it personally on the peninsula as the long-term rentals. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Stacy Wyatt. I'm also a resident here in Newport Beach, I live on Newport Island. I'm sorry that I'm coming to the table here a little late, I wish I had been more involved in this issue when it first came up, and I'm sure you've been addressing this in various ways over the years. I'm only going to speak to my recent experience. We moved to Newport Island about five years ago, and we decided this is where we wanted to stay. It is just a really cute, very neighborly place to live, but I will say, over the last three years, there has been a dramatic change. And I do attribute a lot of that to the fact that the short-term rentals have really changed the complexion of our neighborhood fabric. There is a lot more traffic, there is just real disrespect for, you know, neighbors in general. One of the things I was curious about as I was listening to some of the presentation tonight is that there was some discussion regarding caps, you know, that 1,600 would be a reasonable number of permits to issue in the city. And I think that's an interesting number, I'm not exactly sure where that math came from, because I look at our island, and we have about 109 homes, and we have 17 short-term rentals there right now, which means, you know, that's like 16% of our homes are now more business than they are residential. That's a concern to me. I mean, if we were to apply that math to the rest of the city, you'd be looking at 7,000 permits. I just don't understand why there isn't more consideration given to the density, like how many permits are in close proximity to each other. I know different businesses like group homes and drug rehab centers, there are regulations regarding where they can be located, so that you don't end up with an erosion of the community fabric or the, the community or neighborhoods. I think the same consideration needs to be given when you're talking about issuing permits to short-term rentals, because when you get five or six of these on a street, it changes your neighborhood, okay? So really, that's, that's my input, and I really do appreciate the consideration that everybody and work everybody's put into it, but I hope that any modifications to the ordinances takes into consideration the things I've, I've expressed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Chris Murray. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Expedia Group, and appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening, Mr. Mayor O'Neill and members of the city council. Also want to thank city staff for the time they've taken to meet with representatives of Expedia Group as you've worked toward these measures to protect residents and the integrity of your neighborhoods in Newport Beach. And Expedia Group does have, representing Verbo and HomeAway, and that family-based vacation rental experience has extensive experience working with cities across California and quite frankly, around the world, to really make sure that there are appropriate measures put in place. With regard to the draft language that's before you tonight, there were two concerns, and there was a letter that was sent to, to the council and to the staff yesterday, really outlining these in, in great detail from Walter Gonzalez with Expedia Group, so hopefully you have a copy of that. But just to highlight the points they wanted to make, there were two provisions that were somewhat concerning, and they had some advice with regard to license enforcement. Newport Beach's proposed regulations would require platforms to review the listings for license numbers and to check those numbers against a city-maintained registry. And as this provision moves forward, we encourage you to keep two practical considerations in mind. First, developing a seamless registry portal and system available to all of your short-term lodging platforms that can, because these can be complex and a time-consuming task for your staff and for the operators and platform providers. But based on our experience with similar efforts in other cities, we recommend an effective date of at least 90 days after final passage of the ordinance to ensure that all of those registries are up to date. Second, once enabled, the city's license registry must be updated at least once per day, and ideally in real time, as licenses are approved or revoked. This would allow newly licensed operators to get their properties listed on the platforms as soon as they are eligible, and helps platforms remove unlicensed properties without delay. And then as drafted regarding the TOT requirements, the proposed ordinance would require platforms to begin collecting and remitting the TOT generated, and Expedia Group believes that this provision requires voter approval under Proposition 218, which prohibits local government from imposing, extending, or increasing any general tax unless it is submitted and approved by a majority vote. The proposed language would impose, newly impose tax liabilities and obligations on platforms versus the operators, which has been the practice, by subjecting the platforms to tax collection, record-keeping, enforcement, enforcement and remittance activities for taxes owed as a result of residential occupancies that the platform facilitates. And while TOT is imposed on the transients for the privilege of living in, for short-term in these residences, if that tax liability is, has been previously imposed on the operator, but if it's not remitted, whether or not it's collected by the operator would be the obligation and new obligation of the platforms. So the proposed language would effectively treat them like operators, and we'd ask you to look into that. Again, I know the purpose of this is to protect your residents, the integrity of your neighborhoods, and we hope to be a resource to you, and we're happy to meet with staff. There may be mechanisms to achieve what you want to achieve through this provision without including it in the ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Yelena Tam. I own and run a vacation rental company. It's a small company with about 10 employees. The majority of my business is in Coachella Valley. We only manage two properties here in Newport as of July of 2019. And of course, when I took this on, I knew I would be getting into a different market, and what I really liked about, well, first I'll state I'm a resident of Newport Beach, I've lived here for about 15 years. I've always liked about the city of Newport Beach, they very clearly defined where you can have a vacation rental and where you cannot. And that I like very much. So people purchasing home in these areas, no, no, what they're getting themselves into, what they can get themselves into. I do want to mainly address a couple of things you said, because I submit TOT and work with five different cities, Newport Beach included. When I started in Newport Beach, I think I've talked to your city department more than I've talked to any of the desert cities ever in five years all combined. It's pretty unclear how to obtain a license, who to talk to, where to send a check, it's a quarterly filing form, but it's not found online, but they have to send it to your office, but where is your office? But now it didn't get to your office. It's, it's a very cumbersome, and I don't want to offend anyone, but it's a pretty archaic system. Nobody does that like this anymore. Very frankly, the easier you make it for people to do the things right, they're going to do things right. So if you can put some effort into that. Number two, on the occupancy rule, I like that, two per bedroom plus two is a reasonable rule. In regards to the size and the bedrooms of the property, yes, many cities actually have an inspector, and what they do is pull a tax record, if there's any discrepancy, they'll send an inspector, and it's $275 that the owner pays. And not a fan of signage. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. I'm Gary Cruz. I'm also Newport Island, and I agree with everybody that has stated that the quality of life has changed over the years. Highest on the list of quality of items that have changed for me is parking. It's, and one of the things I would like to hear a clarification on is, how many parking spots does a short-term occupancy building allow? I think I heard one, and if that's what I heard, that's incredibly low. You know, what's happening on Newport Island, and I've seen it other places besides Newport Island, is people are parking on the sidewalks, people are parking in the red, disabled people can't, can't put a wheelchair down the street. So if it's one, I think it's incredibly low. That's my only statement.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Scott Carpenter, owner and operator of ITR Vacations. Council, staff, thank you very much for all the work that you've done with this. This is a really, really solid place for us to jump off and kind of move this business going forward. I would just let council know that there are still so many things that are coming down the line in terms of that are going to affect this business from a technology standpoint, and I think some of those things may or may not be addressed in the ordinance as it's written, so there's an opportunity for us to possibly put noise monitors in each unit to help with that enforcement. The one thing, there are two things that I am concerned about. One is signage, and I'll give you a personal story. I manage a property for a family, it's a family of four, and they have a special needs son. They come and use their personal property at least six times a year. The last thing they really want to do is have a sign on the front of their property saying this is a short-term rental, because they have a special needs member of the family, they just feel it imposes on their privacy and also their safety. So that's one thing to maybe look at a little bit more. The other, and Councilman Hurdman mentioned it, is getting a little bit more clarification on what is taxable and what is not taxable. When I started my business in 2015, I met with city staff and I was advised on one thing, but as we're going through audits, we're finding that certain other things should be taxable. So I think there's an opportunity to clean up the language there and make it a little bit more stronger and say, this is specifically what is taxed and what is not taxed, because if you go on to VRBO or Airbnb, right now you may find two or three operators charging a different tax rate, because there's a little bit of confusion with what that needs to be. I am all for taxing the things that need to be taxed, but it just needs to be communicated a little bit more clearly and effectively for us to run the business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is-
My name is Carmen Rosson. In the ordinance, there is a reference to a visitor service fee. I have been doing short-term rentals since 1992, and I never heard of that before, only the TOT. So is that an additional fee that will be charged or no? It says transient occupancy tax and visitor service fee. So we would like a clarification on that. Also, in the section 5.95.045, under conditions, it says owners should enter into written agreement with the user, the guest. If we use a property management company, the agreement is written between the property management company or the agent and the guest, not the owner. So I wouldn't comply with that as an owner that uses a property management company. Also, in section A5, it says that we should provide copies of municipal code sections, at least several sections. Well, if you give a guest too much information, they are not going to read it. Rather than giving the copies of the municipal code that can maybe be complex, just tell them what the requirements are about trash in simple language so they can follow. Regarding the signs, originally, it says to provide a contact name and phone number for the answering service. Originally, the idea was to provide a contact name and then the phone number of the contact person. Once you use an answering service, if that's the way you're going to proceed, it makes no sense to have a contact name. Many properties have an additional sign, because although most of the bookings are via the online, we still have many signs, like you see Burwhi Beachview, Balboa Newport with their phone numbers to rent, right? To try to get more guests. So you may have people calling the answering service, asking what's the rate and if they have availability. So there can be confusion on that, and then your answering service is going to be doing the service that they were not hired to do, that is to try to rent the units. So maybe this, if you proceed with a sign, should be with language that say, if you have complaints about this property or something, call this number, and then you have your other sign that says, call this other number to book this unit. So I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. If you're interested in speaking, just so I have an idea of time, it'd be great if you could stand in the middle. All right, go ahead. Okay, sorry.
Ken Rosson. I just wanted to add a couple of quick points and a little history for the benefit of you all. I got to attend every one of the meetings that your ad hoc team did in their various districts. They're very well done. I got to hear the same thing I hear in my District 1, Balboa Island, Corona Del Mar, they're all concerned about parking, they're all concerned about noise. They had a number of residents that showed up that are residents, not owners, of short-term lodging units, and then they had a number of people showed up with short-term lodging permits and owners. The residents complained about the noise, but they don't want to offend the owners that are doing the short-term lodging. So I'm saying to you, thank you for what you're doing here, because this gives it teeth, this gives it direction. I truly believe from my experience, my wife and I, that was Carmen who just spoke, we've been doing short-term rental for a very long time. And when the police are called, and we have other short-term rentals on our block on the peninsula, and if we call about noise or disturbance, they never reveal our name to the occupant of that property. And that's what I think some of the residents get concerned about. Oh, I'm going to be a bad neighbor. Well, that owner of that property is never going to know you called on those people. And so we ask our neighbors, call, do something, take a step, don't let it get out of control. Our police are very professional, coming and taking care of noise control. So I applaud what you're doing here. I would like to see the concept of one parking space per unit applied. I have a unit that's near me that has 11 studio units. They rented out short-term lodging. They have two parking garages, they have two garages that are full of construction debris and no cars can park in them. This is an owner that does not care, and he says, I just tell all the people they got to find something on the street. Do this rule, have this requirement. The city can come in and shut a property like that down and say you cannot have a permit. So I applaud that. Thank you for what you're doing.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Craig Batley, and I own Burwhi Realty, and I'd just make a quick side comment. If the city enforced no storage in garages throughout the peninsula and Balboa Island, you'd have plenty of parking, because most of the garages down there have storage in them, they don't even park their cars in there. I want to commend the city staff for the time and effort for which they devoted to propose this change in the municipal code. It's a good beginning, and with some revision, will improve the city's ability to regulate short-term lodging. Orange County, Newport Beach manages short-term lodging more effectively than any city in Orange County. Before a council votes to approve this ordinance, I am recommending, of course, that they make some changes in this ordinance to clarify some of the items that were presented tonight and some of the ones I brought up in my emails. By the way, for the record, I lived on 31st Street for 14 years, and I had vacationers on each side of me, and I've called the police many times on my neighbors, and that's a good thing. I know what it's like. As a hotel or turn to short-term lodging is a privilege for families. Families seldom violate city code. We have families coming back to the same house year after year. By the way, just for the record, Burwhi Realty does not manage any properties on Newport Island, Newport shores, or Corona Del Mar. Why? Those are family neighborhoods, and you have too many problems. We just don't deal with that. We stay on the peninsula. There's a couple of things I'd like to suggest, though. First, I'd like to suggest that the city attorney's office provide a short-term lodging contract as a model for short-term users to use, a contract with provisions that deal directly with the city code. For instance, if there was a, quote, "peaceful and lawful occupation clause" in the contract, it enables the owner or the operator to immediately evict any short-term guests. Guests have no rights, they're not governed by the law, and they can be evicted for cause at any time. If they have a contract with the proper clause in that, it can be done right away. I've unfortunately had to do that a few times. Overnight occupancy. A sign on the outside of the property that says, let's say, eight or 10 or whatever it might be, is problematic, because that's overnight occupancy. So somebody walks behind the property, and there's 10, 12 people on the patio, oop, must be overoccupied. You're going to get a lot of calls on that. And I just don't think that's really a good way to do it. The other thing about occupancy is, if you have a 1,200-square-foot house, three-bedroom house, you get eight people. If you have a 5,000-square-foot house, three-bedroom house, you get eight people. If they have a den and a loft, all houses are not the same. There needs to be some adjustment for square footage and maybe other rooms. Answering service, the required requirement for everybody to have to call, to use the city number is impractical and won't work. How do owners receive timely messages? Most of the messages will be things like, my Wi-Fi is down, my TV's not working, I'm locked out of my unit. That's not really a good thing to use.
Yeah, go ahead, Craig. I know how many units you've got, so go ahead.
And, you know, the neighbors are smoking. The city should not take on the role of a clearinghouse for all after-hours calls for short-term lodging guests on behalf of 1,500 owners. That's just, you know, I think, not very practical. Thank you for your attention to these details. In the aggregate, if these issues and others are not addressed, the new code revision will need amending in short order. Please send this revision back to staff for further modifications, as you heard tonight. By the way, you have any questions?
We might. We probably will. We'll bring them back. All right, next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Don Abrams. I'm a broker on Balboa Island, where my company sells many homes, and we manage many vacation rentals. I have a vacation rental next door, and I have an ideal enforcement mechanism. The owner who I've become friendly with has my phone number, and I have his. And I've told him over the years, if there's any disturbance to my living, I'm calling you. And you know how many disturbances there have been? Zero. Also, my phone number, 714-325-9055, is posted all over Balboa Island. Do you know how many phone calls I've had this year or last year or the year before about disturbances from our vacation rentals? Exactly none. Everyone has my number. I want to say to the staff, I know you've worked really hard on this. I've been to many of the meetings you've held, and there's a lot of diligence here. There's a lot of things I disagree with completely. And we're doing all this because there were 35 citations written in Newport Beach last year. Thirty-five out of thousands and thousands and thousands of vacation stays, there were 35 citations. Is this a problem that really needs fixing? 714-325-9055. Simple solutions. I don't think we need the nanny state, Big Brother, 1984, talking about inspecting these vacation rentals. If you saw today's LA Times, there was an article about Joshua Tree, where these professional snoops are going into vacation homes, and the people in Joshua Tree are up in arms. This isn't Newport Beach. We don't need this. Do we need a set number of vacation rentals? 1,600? Where did that come from? I wish someone could tell me. Should we regulate the number of driver's licenses in the state, because we could screen out bad drivers? Should we regulate the amount of attorneys and doctors, because maybe some of them won't be competent? Yes, we should regulate them, but we don't regulate the number. We come up with reasonable rules and regulations, and some of the reasonable regulations that have been proposed are good. Two people to a room plus two? This is a reasonable regulation. Why not enforce that? And why not enforce, as Diane Dixon suggested, the number of days? Why should we have one-day rentals? That's ridiculous. That's an invitation to party city. That doesn't belong in Newport Beach. Why not require a three- or four-day stay? These are reasonable regulations. But saying, oh, 1,600, only 150 more and we're done? There's no reason for that. I don't know if everyone's aware, but there was a new state law.
A little bit more.
There was a new state law that was just passed this year that says if you tear down a multi-unit dwelling, you have to replace it with a multi-unit dwelling. And the reason for that is we have a so-called housing shortage. Whether you agree with the law or not, this is our law now. This tends to devalue the many duplexes in our city already, because if many of the people who would be buying these or buying them for their proximity to the water and the location, they don't want a duplex. So now they have to keep a duplex. But now with this proposed regulation, you're saying they might buy a duplex and not be able to have a short-term rental because of this arbitrary number of 1,600. So this definitely devalues our property if this cap were put in. Definitely devalues our property. The one other thing I'd like to speak to briefly is the parking. This will hurt the elderly. I have an elderly lady who we manage a home for on Balboa Island. She lives downstairs, and she's got a two-bedroom, one-bath vacation over the garage, which we manage as a vacation rental, but it's got no parking. She would lose her ability to live in her home if this parking were passed. So I urge you not to do that either. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Curtis Westlin. We've been guests and an owner here in Newport for 14, 15 years now. I just want to echo the gentleman who spoke from Pearl about the signage. I think it just cheapens Newport if we do something post that way. I'm not so opposed to putting a sticker in the window. It's not as obvious. And as a few gentlemen, Mr. Batley and them, said, the city's going to get so many phone calls at that answer machine for complaints. Is it for rent or whatever? I try to screen my occupants as well as know who they are as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Tom Mann. I live in Corona Del Mar. We've been renting our house periodically for about seven years. The only complaint we've ever had is from our renters about all the construction noise in the neighborhood. So not much we can do about that. It's growing. We've asked our renters very carefully. We don't rent to a group of kids. That's not going to happen, and we don't want that to happen. Our neighbors have our phone number, and they call us if there's any noise. I don't disagree with the idea, any of these really, except the signage. I think in Corona Del Mar, if we stick a sign outside, I go to Balboa Island, and I don't like all the rental signs. I think it's just kind of ugly. So I think in Corona Del Mar, the last thing we want to do, which with a neighborhood that's increasing in value, is stick a bunch of signs outside on the street. So that's just my opinion, but I hope you take that to consideration. So that's my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. We have one more. Anyone else planning on speaking? Raise your hand. Okay, all right.
Hi. My name is Roya, and I'm one of the Corona Del Mar residents. I have a luxury unit for short-term rental with all the high-caliber guests, guests per unit.
Would you mind coming closer? Thank you.
Two guests per unit and two car parks for the unit, zero complaint for the past 10 years. I have one problem with the proposal, and that is, basically, that's a question. What is the, do we have the map for the coastal zones? Do we know what is the coastal zones versus?
Sorry, we don't have that part of the presentation, but it's on our website, what the coastal zones are. It's pretty quick to find.
Okay. Is that, because last time I talked to Joy Brenner, I think we sent you an email, and you said they're south of the, okay, and you said they're grandfathered? I'm sorry?
So, I'm sorry. Why don't you keep going through your, and we'll make sure we get your information after your public comments. Go ahead.
Okay. So you said that those are grandfathered within this proposal. However, I just saw that it's saying you're eliminating within the 10 years. And why is that?
All right. We'll answer that after your public comment. Okay? All right?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wayne Smith, broker-owner of Corona Del Mar Properties. I'd like to reach out and mention a couple of issues. One is the parking. There's a gentleman that got up and talked about having an Airbnb next to him with 12 single units, and the garage is full. That's something that really needs to be addressed. If someone's going to have 12 units, and there's no parking for anyone, especially the neighbors, there should be a consideration. Maybe the garages need to be inspected, and maybe they should be able to be used. Fortunately, unfortunately, there's been a lot of properties built 100 years ago, they have very little parking. But if there's a consideration for the neighbors, the tenants that live next door to Airbnb would be, work out good. Also, I want to reach out regarding the answering service. I would imagine most of your complaints come in the summertime, when all the college students are out, they're playing beer pong, they're partying. Your answering service is getting overindated. Like the gentleman spoke earlier, there is a problem. I believe that the neighbors and the tenants next door to every Airbnb should have your phone number, have the person in charge's phone number to get ahold of them right away, because if there's a problem, they will address it immediately. If you have an answering service and they are overwhelmed, and they're trying to get ahold of people, that problem might not get addressed for quite a while. So that's something I would seriously consider. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Ms. Brenner.
Couple of things that I wanted to say. I think it was really interesting years ago when the council decided that our one residential neighborhoods were excluded from this, because it really made the rest of us sort of second-class citizens, and it's the part of town that is more dense already. So they excluded themselves So, they excluded themselves on their larger lots with more space between their properties and they subjected the rest of us in the smaller, more dense communities to having short-term vacation rentals. And so now we're trying to look at a way to make this circumstance better for all of us, for the people that live there and call that our home. These are our residential neighborhoods. These are not just rental units. This is where we live. This is where we call our home. I've lived in my neighborhood for 57 years and it's always been primarily residential. So, I think it's, you know, and the fact that Simone keeps saying, this is not a property right. This is something that we allow people to do with their property if they're good neighbors. And speaking of good neighbors, one of the things that we talked about in our meeting is that we need to provide these owners and the property management companies some, a template of what would go inside the unit for the people to know. Did you happen to bring the sample that you showed us at our meeting this morning of the, or was that, that was Jeff's? Yes, so Jeff made a template up showing the trash collection schedule, the noise regulations, that sort of thing. And one of the things that we talked about that we would like to add on there is that this has to be peaceful at all times. You're not ever allowed to disturb your neighbors. And that's something that we were proposing that the rental companies and the owners have ahead of time and they can provide to their tenants so that that tenant knows what the rules and regulations are for being a good neighbor in this community and that that property management company can, they can have a clause in their contract that says, if you don't obey these rules, then your lease is going to be canceled and you're going to be kicked out. So, you know, there's things that we can do that can, we agree that generally these are good neighbors. I have one next door to me. So, and generally speaking, they have really nice people that come in there and my only complaint is I don't get to know them because they're not there long enough. So it's not like a real neighborhood. On the signs, I sort of understand your point. When I first moved to Corona Del Mar, even real estate companies were not allowed to put up real estate signs in Newport Beach because they thought that it cheapened the neighborhood. So, you couldn't have signs in Newport Beach and you couldn't have fast food restaurants back there neither. So, that was a while ago. But, so I understand the concern about the sign, but I also know the neighbor next door to me, I don't know his phone number. And he rents it, I believe, directly. I don't know if he's on VRBO or whatever, but I have no idea what his phone number is, if there were a problem to call him. So I do think that's a concern that needs to be addressed. Not everyone has the landlord's phone number, that they can call them directly. So we need to, perhaps, on the real estate sign that's there, we could include the language that as long as there was posting on the sign that's there of who to call for complaints, that that would satisfy our requirement. So they wouldn't have to have two signs up for this. But if there's no sign there, we need to have a decal or something so that people know how to reach the answering service. And I think it's interesting that we, there have only been 35 citations, but there have been a lot of complaints. So, we're getting complaints galore on this. And I thought it was interesting that the independent newspaper did a survey of how many, whether people voted in favor of these regulations or doing nothing and that it was something like 85, 86% of the community wanted us to regulate these in some way. As far as the question about Corona Del Margos, south of PCH is coastal zone, north of PCH is not. And we enacted 10 years so that anyone who has a short-term rental at this point in time could wean themselves off of that. And now, that doesn't mean that you can't still have vacation rentals because you can still do a 31 if you can rent for a month and you're not subject to these regulations. So, that's kind of critical to understand. I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I think the committee did a really good job on this and I agree with virtually all of the provisions. And it just occurs to me, there's a theme here tonight, you know, we had a discussion about the boardwalk and we were discussing about short-term rentals. And Newport Beach is just such a fantastic place, geographically, weather, the whole thing. We all know this. When you say you're from Newport Beach when you're traveling, people, they go, oh, you know, they know what it is. And through primarily technology, we're just getting overrun by this stuff, right? The rental of everything. The rental of everything. Bikes, boats, houses, just the whole thing. And the Catalina Flyer used to never be packed. It's packed every run now. You can't get a seat if you want to get over there on a spur-of-the-moment thing, which a lot of people use for back and forth. And we've always been pro-business in this town. We've been pro-growth. I think councils, I think that's just something we've always done and we've been loath to put limits on businesses. And I think this council's demonstrated that. So it's, and on the other flip side, we've got residents that are in a lot of pain because they've seen their neighborhoods transformed. And it's not like you can pick up and move. You're sitting on maybe a property tax base that it's going to crush you when you move. So you're kind of stuck with it. And if you've got a neighbor next door that's not, if you give a damn about your life, they're not going to do anything. And I know this from experience. And there's not much you can do. You just have to suffer with it. And we've had people talk about that. So I'm real, I'm empathetic because I've had the same issue. So, it's just, we're a victim of our own success here. And I think the amount of TOT we collect, I feel that we should put more of it into code enforcement. And is that growing government? Maybe it is. But I don't know what the solutions are. It's great if you can go next door to your neighbor and say, hey, you're renting, give me your phone number. Suppose he tells you? Eh, not going to do that. And try calling the police on a Saturday night. Our police force is great, but when you call, and I'm speaking from experience, and you've got a noise complaint, you're way down the list on a Friday, Saturday night because there's so much going on. And rightly so, because they have a lot better things, more important things to do than follow up on a noise complaint. But my experience has been, they eventually get there. But by that time, you're lying in bed furious that this noise has been going on. So, I think this is a great step and we continue to need community input. I think we, I've seen emails from people that are just from Corona Del Mar, just fed up. And they're stuck in their house because that's, I've always felt protective of, that's our number-one thing in life is our home. And if our home is being violated by noise and partying, it's not our home anymore. It's like a prison for us. So, I think we're fortunate. We have staff that did a great job. This committee did a great job as the first step. We can modify it. We need to hear back. I absolutely think we should have a sign out of some size in front of places because I don't think everyone's going to be able to get their neighbor's phone number and work out that relationship. So we need something. Maybe, you can look it up, maybe every house can be on some website and you can go to the website and find the number, you know, without a sign. Maybe there's something there that can be done. Speaking of technology, I don't know. But it's a real problem. And for someone who's lived in this town for 50 years, I've seen it change too. And it's, as you get older, it gets tougher to take, the traffic, everything else. And at some point, you got to think, well, what do I do? And, but what I hear are people looking for relief. And I hear from some very good business people that do manage their properties. And when properties are well-managed, it is not an issue. I truly believe that. But I think the well-managed properties are in the minority. When I speak well-managed properties, because I've managed properties, I tell, I've told my tenants right straight off, I look them in the eye and I go, I am an active landlord. I am going to be around and I'm going to respond. So they know that. But I don't think, a lot of them aren't, they're out of town. They're literally out of town. So it's really tough. So this is a good first step and we need to work harder, I think, as a city to protect residents from, when they're in distress over these kinds of issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, to Mayor Protem, Avery's point, we have a short-term lodging permit holder registry that has all 1,461 entrance with names, addresses, and phone numbers, don't we?
That just went live this morning.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Ms. Dixon.
I'll come back to that. That's a very good point. First of all, thank you, and thank you, residents and property management companies for speaking. Just to follow up on that one point from the mayor, Protem, we hear tonight our concerned residents and property management companies. I don't know what percentage the property management companies that are here today who enforce or maintain and manage a well-managed relationship with their tenants. What we're not hearing from the people who are the bad apples, so to speak, are obviously not here. And it's a shame that we have to create these tightened regulations. But if, earlier this evening in the study session, we talked, many residents for five years, six years that I've been on the council have expressed their continuous complaints on boardwalk issues. And now, I'm in my fifth, sixth year on the council and this is about the sixth year I've been hearing complaints from residents on short-term rentals. I mean, how long does it take for this council and myself included to say, this is a problem in our community? And we keep thinking, as we are all optimists and positive-thinking people because we live in a beautiful community, that this will self-correct and everybody will realize they have to maintain the quality of life that we all aspire to and want to maintain. But that is not happening. And we've been referring to our good neighbor policy. That is what this is. And let me give some comments about good neighbor policies, that we're trying to all be good neighbors. And I hope everyone could understand that none of us enjoy having to impose rules and regulations, but this is to protect our property values. Because if you, council, former mayor, council member Gardner, lives next door to a rental that is creating disturbances, well, that's affecting her property values. That's not really fair. And we need, I really believe in my mind, that's the reason why we need to look at process improvements and that's what the staff is recommending. Parking, I agree with staff's original comment that if you don't have parking, you don't rent. I mean, a short-term rental is not a property right. I'm sorry. We cannot, the example that was given about these 11 studio apartments with no parking, it's destroying our communities. On top of that, we all know that we have new state laws that are removing the city's ability to impose parking requirements on ADUs and other kinds of development. So we're going to, if we don't address start thinking about parking, it's, we're going to be more overwhelmed than we are on parking. On the occupancy, I'm comfortable with the occupancy requirement. Resident mentioned density. This is one area that we are not addressing. Many cities who have short-term rental permit requirements require or impose density requirements. There could be X number of short-term rentals permits per block. We are not going there, yet. Maybe someday, but we are not going there. The noise monitor, I thought it was a clever idea, if we get there. Also, on, maybe we don't need signage or if we do, a smaller sign in a window, I'm okay with that. And Carmen had an excellent point, that this number's going, the answering service number's going to be getting, how much does it cost? What's the rental? We've got to clarify, this is for complaints only. But maybe it could be simply on an app. The city, we have My and Be an app and it could be to identify, just type in the address and their contact information can be on the, on the My Newport Beach app. It's a good way to promote the app. I want to just remind people that we are, in my opinion, overly accommodating to the short-term rental market in our community. As Simone, would you mind putting up that slide again, please, Simone? Our numbers are 1,451. The next highest number is Carlsbad with 690. Santa Monica, this, the city of no rules, has 340, has 340 short-term rental permits. I am very proud that we have been able, as a community, to more or less peacefully coexist with 1,400 and soon-to-be possibly 1,600 units. And many people have asked, where does that number come from? I'll ask Simone in a moment. He can explain where that number comes from. But I think we have certainly set the standard for being a welcoming, visitor-friendly, short-term rental community on the legacy of this industry in our community. But I don't think we have to roll over and be played dead in terms of people taking advantage, coming into our communities, coming into our neighborhoods and taking advantage of all that Newport Beach has to offer. There may be an economic benefit, but there is no economic benefit to destroying property values in our community. Signage, complaint call number, okay, one, okay, Simone, this is what I want to ask you. We've heard some comments about minimum night stays. I'd like, maybe this is from a procedure standpoint, if we include this in tonight's motion, that's fine. Or if this has to come back for, in the future, after we adopt an ordinance tonight, I hope we do. But these two changes, I want to consider possibly tonight or if you need more work, I can understand it takes more work. I think there is support in the community by the professional companies as well as the residents to impose a minimum night stay of two to three nights because it's the over, the single night that is probably the most destructive to our neighborhoods. Okay, I want to talk about Newport Island. Simone, if you would be so kind to explain this phenomena that we've all, staff and Mr. Herdman and Ms. Brenner and myself have just become aware of, that personally, we've all thought that there's been a cap and a grandfather freeze on permits issued on single-family residences. That is true. However, what's come to our attention because of what the experience that residents have been contacting us about Newport Island, I asked a simple question, how come three years ago, there were two short-term rentals on Newport Island and now there are 17? And every structure on Newport Island is a single-family residence. How does this happen? Mr. Jurges, explain what's going on in some parts of our community.
Certainly, Councilmember Dixon. So, our current ordinance, the way it's written right now, it states that short-term lodging can only get permitted in zoning of R2 or greater, or 1.5 or greater. So it's more the multifamily zones. You cannot get a short-term lodging permit for an R1 zone. And so it is, it is based on pure zoning. What's transpired over the years in Newport Beach is that we've had property owners purchase a R2 duplex, tear down the existing duplex, and build a single-family. And that is kind of a normal type of construction in the city. And that single-family, even though it's in an R2 zone, is still able to get a short-term lodging permit. It's still valid to get a short-term lodging permit. So over the years, you've had this reduction of density where they've been tearing down the duplex in an R2 lot and building a single-family home. Until the question was asked, and our ad hoc committee did ask the question of how many of these do we have? And we found that there are 1,800 single-family homes sitting on an R2 lot. And of that 1,800 single-family homes, 200 of them have a short-term lodging permit. And again, we didn't know the data until somebody's asked a question and we looked at it. Again, our current code, the way it's written, it just says that you have to be in the right zoning. It doesn't say anything about the structure type. And what's been happening, evolving in our community, is that down, de-intensifying of the density from the duplex down to a single-family, these bigger homes.
Which you can't do anymore anyway, under new state law.
Under new state law, correct. SB 330 prevents us from doing that.
So, I would like to propose that staff, either if we can incorporate it tonight, specifically cap Newport Island at the, where are they, at 17?
Correct.
Because it's going to be out of control before we know it. And if we need to expand such a cap, and the other, how many numbers did you say? 2,000?
We have 1,800.
1,800.
Correct, 1,800 single-family homes.
So, requires further analysis, but at least I don't want this to go any further on Newport Island to cap it as it exists because we cannot take it away from those existing properties right now that have been rented.
Correct.
We could freeze it. Yeah, all right. So that is my comment. So that is my comment. I think I've addressed all my points. I want to again, thank you for all the work and the residents, too. I think we're making a lot of progress, and I hope we move forward on much of this this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Herdman.
Just one quick last comment. It was not the intent of the subcommittee that came up with these recommendations for this ordinance, to have the sign that is posted outside of the residence to take the place, the place of the police department. If there is a serious infraction, it would be the expectation that the police would be called, as has always been the case. The sign is more with a contact person and a phone number, is more of a backup, a backup to that. Lots of times Nancy's probably experienced this, a sense of frustration, because there's been no one to get a hold of when there has been a problem. So the sign is, for some reason, I can't come up with the word, it's not an alternative, but it's an, an addition to a call to the police department if there's a serious problem. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So I won't be supporting this, but I would like to see this done still in a, in a wise fashion. Mr. Harp, do you have concerns, I believe, about imposing a minimum stay in coastal regions, correct?
Well, coastal has been the argument, made arguments about intensity of use, and whether or not, you know, limiting stays impacts the ability of people to stay in, in cities, and whether that does impact intensity of use requiring a coastal development permit or other modifications to the local coastal program. But there's counter-arguments, and cities have been successful in arguing that it's a police power and that the cities have the right to regulate things within their police power.
Well, I'm probably overly cautious on this, kind of, except for just caution my colleagues, if we bite off more than we could chew, the whole, the whole ordinance could be thrown out. How does this proposal affect mixed use?
So currently, in our current code, mixed use are not allowed to have short-term lodging. And so we have not included any mixed use. So as we've proposed, mixed use does not get short-term lodging.
Okay, so mixed use, actually, in my opinion, makes the most sense for this sort of lodging, because it's not single-family home residences traditionally. Mixed use, perhaps limited to the R2, I would recommend, when the motion's made, including that. And I would actually recommend going a step further and having them, having them have priority in the wait list for those who are applying. That way, as the cap is reached, mixed-use locations are going to take the available slots for single-family home neighborhoods and put them into, in locations that are essentially located on top of commercial uses. That would be my recommendation, but this is, this is getting very tricky. And I don't envy the side you're on, because a lot of important decisions to make, like I said, I support some of this and some things I do not. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
I'll be real short here. I just didn't want to say nothing, so I just wanted to really, really, really thank everyone involved who has been working on this, you guys. I have not. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the input from everybody, and I think this is a moving target that continues to need work, and we'll continue to do that. But I'm so glad we're doing something, and all you guys have really worked hard on it. So I don't want to get specific, but again, just thanks. Let's, let's get working on it. Let's get this to happen.
All right, hang, hang on.
Just real quick.
No, 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 hang on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I haven't gone yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Can you go pull up the slide with the citation numbers? Because I have to admit, I agree with Don Abrams on this. I think what we're looking at right now, when this, when we originally put, started this ball rolling, what we were talking about was trying to put everybody on the same playing field with people, with rogue operators. We were trying to take care of rogue operators. The goal was paying attention and, and making sure that those folks complied with current law, both in terms of the noise ordinances within, you know, the good neighbor ordinances, and also trying to make sure that the platforms that they were using were remitting TOT instead of being, people getting under the radar. And we've spent a lot of money and a lot of time trying to bring all those people into compliance, and it's showing up. And now we're looking at a situation where we've got a lot of good operators. I mean, we've got all, most of them here, probably all of them here tonight, where they represent hundreds, probably over half of all of the rental units, short-term rental units in our entire city are represented here tonight by the operators who are here. And what we're doing to them is we're making their business harder and more expensive, because of a bunch of people who apparently have been cited 35 times. And so because we are, so we've got hundreds and hundreds of people representing thousands and thousands of vacation rentals, probably tens of thousands of vacation rentals in a community that has always been welcoming. That is part of our history, is having vacation rentals inside of our city, where a coastal commission has already told us repeatedly that we're not exactly the stellar citizens that they expect us to be. We're about to put more regulations and more restrictions on short-term lodging in the coastal zone on good operators, and I just don't think it's appropriate. I do think that we ought to have more enforcement. I don't, I, I think that maybe one, a handful of the ideas here are good ones. I think the sign one's a terrible one. I do think it's, it'll cheapen the look of areas in our community, and it'll also lead to an increased number of calls, just by passersby's, that don't like how things are going. I just, I'm looking right now at, apparently, the live, the website that just went live. I mean, I'm tempted to call some of these people right now from the dais, just to see if they pick up, but, you know, but we've got, I mean, we've got 1,461 properties in an Excel web spreadsheet right here that you can search by address and call the person directly, and now you have their phone number. We're doing a lot. This goes too far, and this isn't appropriate for, for the people that have been good operators for decades inside of our city to do this, too. So I, I'm not going to support this. Ms. Dixon.
What was I going to say? On the, oh, the multi-unit, we've discussed this, I think, also at the study session last November, that it would just become different hotels, different, different hotels that business owners buy, multi-unit apartment buildings, and become hotel alternatives. And just from other city experiences, I think we've heard this, Simone, in terms of what we've heard about multi, that's why we've limited it not to include multi-unit structures, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, so just to restate where we are, what are we imposing on property owners? I mean, we've heard from Mr. Batley and Mr. Abrams, and you've gone back and forth with Mr. Batley to clarify where we are. We certainly hope that, I was not speaking on behalf of the ad hoc committee, but just, we certainly did not want to impose anything burdensome. We, I, I question those numbers, frankly, because I know that there are so many more. I mean, just verbal complaints and frustrated residents who have not had the proper enforcement, or they didn't, whatever. I don't think those numbers are a true reflection of the problems that exist in our community. So I will be supporting these, this proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
I just wanted to mention that we heard from a lot of people who said that when the police were called, the police gave warnings and didn't issue citations. So I don't think 35 citations is an accurate number of the problems that we've experienced in the community.
Okay. All right, and there were a couple of questions, just to make sure we got them from public comment. One of them was about the visitor service fee. They were asking what that was.
So the total TOT is 10%. It's 9% transient occupancy, 1% visitor service, for a total of 10.
Okay, and then one of the questions was, if it's outside the coastal zone, that we're talking about phasing it down over, over a 10-year period? They're asking for the justification for that.
So the ad hoc committee wanted to scale back where they could, and so knowing that to scale back in the coastal zone will be problematic with, with the coastal commission, the proposal was to, you know, can we reduce the number of short-term lodgings somewhere? And so outside the coastal zone, we can regulate that. Ad hoc committee looked at, it was only 58, 59 short-term lodging permits. Allow those to continue for the next 10 years, but don't issue anything further as far as short-term lodging outside the coastal zone.
Okay. I'll bring it back. I'm going to make a motion that we deny staff recommendation. Okay?
I'll second.
All right. Second, do we have a discussion on that motion, Ms. Brenner?
I have an alternate motion.
Substitute.
Substitute motion. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this ordinance.
I will second.
Okay. Do we have discussion on this? Mr. Harp?
And just briefly, we had circulated some amended language for section 5.95050A, and I was worried that was being incorporated into the motion.
Yes.
Second, the second is okay with that? Ms. Dixon?
It was the alternate.
Sorry, so there's, there's a substitute motion, and, and she just incorporated the language that Mr. Harp had circulated, and I just wanted to make sure you're okay with that. Okay. Mr. Duffield.
So are we, I don't think it's in here, but are we going to increase it from one night to two nights? Or, I heard vaguely, so no, it's still one night.
That's not part of the motion.
Right. Is there any way to incorporate that? Because I think that's, that's really the issue. The one-night thing is what causes all the headaches.
Well, if you want to make a friendly amendment...
It might be easier to direct us to come back with that, because that would require some significant changing of the language, to have us come back with something if that's the proposal.
I would support.
It's always confusing, isn't it? Nothing's easy.
I would support bringing it back.
Me, too.
If you're gonna, I think it's probably, well, let me, let me, so it would just be adding language to require two nights? Then, okay, I think we can add that to it, then.
Okay.
I'd amend that.
Nothing about Newport Island, then.
Do we, let me ask a question, Mr. Juerges. Is, on the Newport Island proposal, aspect of the proposal, is that complicated? Is it to your, would you like to wait? I mean, if you, if we move it forward in a few weeks, I, I'm satisfied.
I gotta turn to Mr. Harp here, on his thoughts on...
I think that provision's a little bit more difficult to craft.
Okay.
Here tonight. Adding the two nights, I think we can add that to it.
All right. As long as we bring it back, when, when you've had a chance to do that.
Okay, I'd amend the motion, then, to include that.
And one, one other quick thing. I, I know I had spoken to Councilmember Brenner earlier today to section 5.95040A6. She wanted to change the, the second sentence to read, "The notice shall be in substantial compliance with a template created by the city, which will be available on the city website, and then contain the following information." I think that, that she wanted to add that language as well.
That was our good neighbor policy that we talked about.
Okay.
Yes.
I could go with that, too.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2020-8. An ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending section 1.05.020, subsection F., section 3.16.060, and chapter 5.95 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code relating to short-term lodging, with Councilmember Muldoon and Mayor O'Neill voting no. The motion carries 5-2.
Okay. So for Mr. Harp, closed session announcement?
So, give me just one moment.
So the City Council will adjourn to closed session to meet with legal counsel, discuss item number 4A, which is significant exposure to litigation related to notices of intent to commence cease and desist order, restoration order, administrative civil penalties proceedings received from John Ainsworth, who is the executive director of the Coastal California Commission regarding alleged prohibited encroachments on Peninsula Point. A copy of the notices from Mr. Ainsworth, which are dated January 28th and 30th, 2020, are on file with the city clerk, who probably should take public comment on closed session. Okay. Mr. Mosier.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. I did want to comment on this. As you just heard, the closed session is going to be about a letter that you received from the coastal commission regarding encroachments on the public beach at Peninsula Point. As I understand it, which is not always correct, the coastal commission wants the encroachments removed. They are planning, whatever you do, to collect penalties from the homeowners directly adjacent to the beach. They are inviting and hoping that the city will agree to use part of that penalty money, as I understand it, to restore the beach to its original state. The letter is telling you that if the city does not agree to that amicable agreement, that they will then, or could, order the city to restore the beach, probably at city expense. And, but they would still be collecting the penalties from the homeowners. The agenda says that you're using a Brown Act exemption to discuss anticipated litigation, the threat of legal action against you, which I have no complaint for, and I don't know if this is a misprint or not. It also says, although it doesn't cite that section of the Brown Act, that you might be discussing initiation of litigation, which means you would be discussing whether you should sue the coastal commission. And I wanted to suggest that that is not something you want to do. Number one, you're likely to lose. Number two, this is basically a private dispute between the homeowners and the coastal commission. The city has already invested a large amount of money trying to ease the pain on those private homeowners, and I just don't think it's appropriate that the city should be investing any more money in pursuing a lawsuit for the benefit, everybody paying for a lawsuit for the benefit of a few people. So I hope it's a misprint. I hope you're not planning to sue the coastal commission over this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further. Just a quick clarification, Mr. Harp, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're contemplating suing the coastal commission, it just means contemplating initiation of some kind, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. We stand recessed until we come back out. All right, Mr. Harp, closed session report, please.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. There's no closed session report this evening.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration on any vote taken by the City Council on any action.
Council, any motions? All right, seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you.